That's on your third. This was in my box. Maybe that's right, maybe they left it over in here when they were having one of their meetings. And I probably picked it up because it was hanging around.
I think you're right.
Jake, we got feedback from Yan.
We had little ear things in, so they must have been getting ready to go on. Trying to be hands free on this car.
Whenever you're ready, okay. All right, we have our speed limit hearing this afternoon for proposing changes on three different roads. Segments of those roads. We also on the consent agenda, we have our contract and bond ready or signature to interstate concrete and asphalt, and this is for the paving of Roosevelt Grade Road. Item number seven is a settlement agreement. This is the last one between the county and the bottoms at the end of Panikinik Road, and this will complete that and we can move forward. We also have a couple pay estimates. The first one is to grade works, and this is for Old Mountain Road in the amount of one hundred and seventy one thousand, three hundred and thirty two dollars and fifty cents. We have a pay estimate number four for Lee Contractors for the courthouse steps, entrances for seventy four thousand, eight hundred and seventy one dollars and eleven cents. And then we also have pay estimate number sixteen to Kirby Nagelhout for seven hundred and ninety eight thousand, two hundred and sixty four and eighty four cents. And there's also retainage in all of these, so. Anyway, and they're all listed on the agenda. On the construction side, our annual striping contract is completed. They finished phase two work. Old Mountain Road contractors now pulling ditches on his subgrade, trying to finish subgrade, building approaches and back slopes, and then they'll start placing crushed rock over the top of that. Nothing new on our two grant projects. Still, they keep saying we're going to get the material next Monday, but we'll see.
Yeah.
West Darlin Road paving. The contract and bond will be on your agenda next week, and then I already talked about what's going on with Roosevelt. We have the contract and bond for your signature today.
Are we on some kind of a time limit? To do the paving of the roads, do they need to be done by fall or rain, or is, how does that work?
Yeah, so there's a rain effects when you're overlaying, because it will, they don't adhere to the surface underneath. You can pave on just some crushed rock here, it's more forgiving, it can be wet or damp. But temperature is going to be the big issue. But out there where, you know, it's pretty dry and the time is extended, so we just have to watch temperatures and then moisture, obviously.
So right now, we're not thinking that we might run out of time on both views this year.
No, no, we'll be fine.
Of course, we do have the ultimate, you know, they do shut the plants down eventually.
Well, that could happen, yeah, yeah, there's that.
But that's normally, it's pretty late, that's we're getting, yeah, into November.
Into November.
They don't, they've stopped making it.
Because I, the reason I ask is because I was surprised Darwin got worked on so late in the year. That kind of was like the only that I've ever seen a project happen that late in the year, so that's why this year.
Yeah, or the, the surface, that chip seal, you know, that's not going to last. It wouldn't last if we were to do that. But the, the earthwork, you know, here, it's barely, the farther east we get, it's just more forgiving. And moisture is your big enemy. For that, but we, the subgrades fine and the surfacing, just the surface will peel that off before we pave it, so it should be okay too. Let's see. Design projects, really no change. Our lead designer was out last week, and so everybody else worked on the pieces of the projects that they were working on. And everybody's back now, so. Moving forward on all those projects. Maintenance side, crews yesterday, we had some rockier material in the warm up arena. And so we, last week, we got a rock picker and, and there were a few of us that next picked rocks ourselves and, and we determined that that was not going to work. We were never going to get ahead of it, so. So yesterday, Tony Riley generously donated a sandy, really good looking material, and so our crews hauled that, and we brought in about forty eight loads, I think. Wow, so, and we buried the rocks.
That was very generous.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So, right out of Lyle.
Not four to eight loads.
No, forty eight.
Yeah, forty eight, yeah, and it was in Lyle, so it was a long haul for us.
So, you know, just up where you have a canyon where he has that quarry.
So, oh, that stuff, yeah, that would be really good stuff.
Yeah, it's really good, yes, yeah.
What is the, the Estebro, what are we doing out there? What's the purpose? I mean, we worked on it a year or so ago, if I remember right, is there just a plan?
Yes, as we have, we have the quarry that's there, so we've had, I think when BPA came in, they built the north side of Esteb from the river, basically, north, and so we have our quarry on Esteb Road. And it's, there's no, basically no rock on it, so we can't really maintain anything on it. So we wanted to make sure we at least build as much of it as we can. So we can maintain it, since we haul on it frequently.
How far are we building down? Are we going from federal highway to the river, or how much of that are we doing?
Yeah, Horseshoe Road down, I don't know if there's, how far going, or going back the other way towards Horseshoe back. From the quarry. Yeah, because that's typically where we haul out of. And, you know, like Gordy said, we're getting bus, we should do that because we'd make everybody else do it. And we're getting the material, a lot of it's grind.
So when it's all completed, that section there should be really nice and engraved nicely, but then the section from the gravel pit to the river is still going to be a little lucky going after that.
Yes, yes, yeah, so it's kind of one of those roads that'll get built in pieces. Let's see, so sand of the fairgrounds, hot mix, patching and grading roads, that's east, east end crew, west end crew. They help haul sand, we had all of our trucks going. They, their chip ceiling in Dallasport, where we extended the sewer. Sheppler Road and Hall and Rock on Schilling Road, so. It's kind of one of those times of the year where we're just.
Where does the rock on shield, where does that come out?
That, yeah, come out eventually.
Like there's, yeah, there really is nothing any closer.
How many rock pits does the county have?
We have, there's five main pits. We have Mattson, Esteb.
Mattson.
On the east side, and then we have Esteb, which we talked about, we have Badger, which is, you know, Pickleton Highway. Then we have Benjen, which is the Dicky Quarry, referred to right along the highway, and then we have Fisher Hill, which is up on top of the plateau.
Like between Glenwood and Lyle.
Yeah, yeah, up on the, on Fisher Hill Road, we're not very creative with our names.
Yeah.
That one's kind of sits back, you don't, you can't really see it from.
If you look back in there, yeah, you can see the rock.
Know, you see the rock pile, you know the look, but there's no. But if you walk back, there's a giant hole.
Yeah.
And we used to have a lot more, but we've really consolidated because of the cost to have quarries anymore, the, the permit prices. It's just not worth having a lot of different locations. Yeah, we've closed a lot of quarries over the years.
What do you do with the closed quarries?
We give it, a lot of them like leased, so they open them for projects essentially. They used to open them and the rules weren't as stringent. So you could open them, do your crushings, you'd do right on site, there'd be no trucking. And then you just reclaim them real quick. Now it's not that you got to permit them and go through all nine yards.
That's why we only have five.
Yes, and they're very expensive, like Gordy said, they hold, or not very, but. But, yeah. Of the five, we actually own two, the other three are leased. On the facility side, the new building, the transformer got set last week. They're working in the alley on our drainage system and it seems like we're just kind of tying up all the little loose ends other than the roads out, outside the building, but carpeting and flooring started this week, so in the casework cabinets went in most, all the rest of the ones where they have to fabricate countertops. And so it's really starting to come together pretty quick with the details, so that's good. Because we have about six weeks left, so they have to. So the courthouse front parking lot, they said they're going to start that on the sixth, so after the, after the holiday weekend, then they'll close that, and we're trying to.
Okay, we'll be done.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out how, how close we'll be with the courthouse entrance project, tearing that one up, so, but we have a path, a gravel path, so that entrance with the front edge will still be open. But the people have to use the path.
Yeah.
Until that sidewalk gets bored, so.
Well, people are finding ways to get into the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it was a challenge initially, especially the ADA people.
It's still a challenge because you park and you're like, dang it, I read that memo, but now I have to walk rough around.
Yeah.
That was me this morning.
Yeah, yeah. So. So that's going on. Then they're still working on mechanical, the electricians are still behind, they're starting to punch down the, the cables into the server room. So it's coming together. I think after the first of the, next month, Jeff Rowan and his guys will get in there and they'll start setting up, getting ready to set up the server and get things ready and operational in the building, so. Lots of things going on in the building next door. See, we talked briefly about courthouse entry. Yeah, may have now, as soon as I said, I think I'm like, because I forgot the guy who's going on vacation, the plant, the guy that runs the plant goes on vacation for two weeks.
But no concrete.
So they want, we're going to get, the idea is to get the concrete for the south side this week, we're pushing hard to get that. Because I'm not letting them tear apart the north side till we get, we at least get a firm date when we get concrete. Because I don't want to wait till, I don't want to have both of them torn apart and not get concrete till September. So the idea is to put that one back this week, and then they'll demo the north side and start forming, so when the guy gets back from vacation, we could get.
Be ready to.
Or, we can be ready for, and, you know, hopefully we won't find another bolt or another hole.
There's only one guy that works at the concrete place.
How, seems to be there, the one guy that runs the. Seems to be, because.
One that knows the formula, the secret.
Yeah. Not training anybody else.
Not security, I guess.
Yeah.
It is.
Let's see, so fair, we kind of talked briefly about, I think our guys are kind of wrapping up the last things that we need to, because they start today, so. It'll be busy now until Sunday afternoon and then.
DA's in and all that good stuff.
Yes, yep, yep, all those extra things are done, working and, and everybody's trained. Let's see, say this pass, I don't know if you want to add anything new. We, we're going to meet next week with our consultant to find a time to fly the site. Agreement with other groups. The conservation. So, and the last thing on, I had had this handout for Murdoch and Highway fourteen. So this I got, it was, it was actually sent to us in twenty seventeen, when they, in the end of twenty seventeen. And so this was their proposal, and they asked us for information on how to get ahold of the, you know, the, the council in, in Dallasport and, and some community contacts, and so in twenty nineteen was the last email I had from them. So basically, they're proposing, or we're proposing at the time that there'd be a ramp down to fifty, then forty, and then back up again in the same zone, so they would go down from sixty to fifty to forty, and then back up again. So similar to what happens in Lyle, where there's several speed changes just to reduce you down slowly. But this was the last proposal, so I could follow up with Dave Berkey and, and find out, and I just wanted to pull this up because we had talked about it.
Yeah, that's good, and I am, this will likely be on the community council agenda, they do have a, they've got a meeting on the ninth of September that I'm going to attend.
Okay.
I spoke with Cher last night, but she said, she thanked you for your reach out as well. And I said, yeah, I was, I'll come face the firing squad. Yay, my district. It will be fine, you know, he assured my personal safety. Particularly concerned, but I think this will be, because I think the folks in the folks in Murdoch are trying to communicate with the community council to get them engaged, and so there would be contact also with Wash Dot, so that they're because there really hasn't been much, apparently, hearing from them, everything was kind of on hold during, I think because of COVID and everything, that, as you said, this was back in seventeen.
Yeah, and the last correspondence was the end of nineteen, so right before COVID.
Right before COVID, and I think everything was just on pause, timeout, and so I think they're they're hopeful something's going to happen, so, okay, thanks for that information.
Yeah, if I, I get an email back from Dave Berkey, I'll forward it on TV about where they're at.
I have one thing, and I guess this is kind of for you and you mostly. I would like to get a, a little tie and put on an agenda coming up to discuss, discuss fleet management, fleet management software. Potentially what department would be operating that, sounds like it's perfectly good time to bring it up. She might be one of them.
Okay.
That maybe we can coordinate with all the people across the hall and the people in the room and have some discussions. And something like. Going through the bills today, and when I find hundred and forty dollar oil changes. Very frustrating for.
Anything else? Jake, anything from your site, he's online, so.
Nothing for me.
Okay, great, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. I don't really have anything, it's been. I was just saying, it's been a quiet week, it hasn't, just not even relevant to you folks.
That's good.
I don't think so, no.
When you start your brushing, that's fall, right?
Yeah.
When do we make suggestions for areas that are in dire need of brushing?
Anytime, anytime, yeah, anytime we'll take the service requests, we just wait for the right time to do the work.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. A fun out on the pair.
Oh, yeah.
I'll have to make sure if I see, if I see Mr. Riley, I'll have to thank him.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's nice material.
It is. Yeah, and it occurred a couple of years ago, if you remember, when we had the monsoon in August, then flooded out the large arena. And we had to bring in sand, and so Tony was.
He gave it to us.
Yeah. Which we got that from Dallasport, but this stuff is better because it's coarser material. It'll stay down, the other step, you put that directly down, it'd be blowing all over.
Blowing blow away.
Big sand blaster, bang right off the building.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good material.
Who was online, but I'm like, no, I won't even say it because there are people online. Generous donation, I suppose.
Yes. To the fair, to the fair.
Yes, yes. Thank you, yes.
Already this even includes you guys too with our fairgrounds. If we're going to get a caliber of competitor, you know, that have sixty thousand dollar, dollar horses, maybe it would be a good thing to compare our rates for rental. And that could be a money.
Sure.
More of a money making.
Yeah.
Venue, I work for the Appaloosa Horse Club, the National Reading Horse Association. And we did world and national shows. So, I mean, that we have definitely a horsey environment here, and if we could attract big events, bigger events, that might be a revenue source.
Oh, yeah, like there's pros and cons to that, because even back in campaign season, I was approached by the horsey home people that, that thought our rates were too high, that they could do more shows and promote more tourism and more economic development by having the prices lower. So there's a pro and a con. Other words, I received pushback already.
Yes, I, I'm married to a horse person, I know all about that.
Thankfully, I'm not.
They value their horses very high, and they value what they should have to pay very low.
Right, right.
Should be free.
Yes.
Free to, yeah, well, free to run the event.
Yes.
But the prices need to be high.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to read your report again.
You know, before I said it this time, I made sure that I switched it.
For everybody but them.
Well, I don't know how that works, I give up.
Either that or I'm always the first person to try to open it. And that could be.
That could be.
But I'm the first person, by the time they opened it, it's already been.
It's already been fixed.
Permission's been granted.
Yeah. Because I have not had any problem. See, so maybe.
Usually open it like five minutes after she sends.
Right, I don't.
And I, I told him, I said, well, you know, there's a reason I don't work for IT. You already see works in here.
Yeah, that's good.
Wow.
Right now. Pull something down to East District.
Mr. and your sheriff, you're obviously filling in for sheriff, so whenever you're ready.
All right, so I think I sent this to you guys, you have a copy of it. So a total of five thousand seven, or excuse me, fifty seven hundred and seven calls for service, January first to August ninth. It's about a two percent increase from, during that same time from last year. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of three hundred and one civil papers during that same time period. That's about a nine percent decrease during the same time period last year, and that's kind of subject to the stuff that comes out of the courts. Deputies issued three hundred and forty six traffic infractions for non-traffic infractions, seventy seven criminal traffic citations, and forty six non-traffic criminal citations. That's about the same number as last year.
Do you, do you know, because when I read that, I kind of questioned, is that, I mean, last year and this year, COVID years?
Right.
Is it kind of the same number as three years ago, or do you know that if I just thought, thought you had?
Yes and no, so I was writing tickets, and I probably did about half that number myself for the infractions. I did a lot of traffic enforcement in between calls, I just.
Looking at the budget, I'm looking at revenues from traffic citations, and it's down for.
It is decreasing, and then our traffic deputies, we have two, two guys that, that's kind of their full time responsibility is to do that. Obviously, we're short some positions, so they're not doing as much of that right now, so. I think if we're, in, in years past, we've been about, I think around two thousand infractions total for the entire year, and.
It's not that I'm asking you to write more tickets.
No, and that's, yeah, it's. Yeah, it is, it is situation dependent on, you know, who gets a ticket and why, why tickets are issued. And then right now, our traffic deputies, we're using them for patrol, so we did lose obviously my Calio, but we lost Melissa White. At the moment, Tony Warren was hired as a lateral, but he has to go through an equivalency, he's there right now going through that. So we're hoping to fill that, and then obviously I'll get to our other position here shortly, so we're, we're down personnel. So I think COVID last year, it was kind of the, what do we recommend for people? And so everybody had to make a decision, did they, did they, you know, contact somebody for going a little over the speed limit and risk getting COVID? So it was kind of a, kind of a spot that everybody had to. I, I think it is, yes, I really think it is, and then just, you know, when you hire new people, they tend to be very proactive on going out, write tickets, because it's kind of a cool new thing. And then as time gets, we get more experience, it's kind of lets up. I am, I'm just, that's from my own personal experience, I mean, I, when I became a cop, I was like, yes.
There's no quota in the sheriff's office.
There is no quota, there is no quota, in fact. We let them go out and write as many tickets as they want. Um, it won't let me go write tickets, though. And it's, there are some deputies that they're more in, if they make traffic stops, they're less inclined to write a ticket. You know, because they have the discretion on, on what type of enforcement they do, they can write a ticket, they can choose not to write a ticket. And so some deputies choose not to, it's just their own personal kind of situation, so. We're still working on body camera research to present to the board of county commissioners, we have met with WatchGuard, G-Tech, and Axon representatives, and we are waiting final costs to add to our presentation to the board of county commissioners.
Do you happen to know the date of when that's mandated that it has to be? Has to be done by the state?
Um, I, I don't believe, yeah, I, my understanding is it's not a mandated thing, but it's a strongly encouraged thing, and then starting January one, if we have interviews of suspects, we have to record those interviews, I think it's January one. And then there's so many different dates that they. I think it's like January one that we have to start recording, we have, I believe all the patrol cars on the road have working dash cameras except for one. And that one's slated to be replaced this year anyway, so we have some way to record audio and video. The downside of the dash cameras is if you move too far away from the vehicle, then you don't get the audio. The body camera also is on that deputy, so you'd be able to get a better view. For our detectives, we do have like the GoPros that they can use, they can hook their computers in and go that direction on things. So we do have some ways to at least record audio and video from any interviews that we have going. So. On July tenth, two thousand twenty one, we attended the Golden Dale Community Days event. We participated in the parade and had a booth on East Main Street. The event had large crowds, and we received a lot of positive feedback from the attendees. On July thirty first, two thousand twenty one, we attended the Trout Lake Fair. We participated in and provided some traffic control for the parade. We walked around the fair event at Camp Jonah. The event had large crowds, and we received some very positive feedbacks from the attendees. Volunteers with the Quiktech County Posse have been assisting with courtroom security, we received positive feedbacks from the judges on the vital role the volunteers have been providing. A number of employees have tested for, or excuse me, tested positive for COVID nineteen. The employees are all doing well, and we want to assure the board of county commissioners that no services have been interrupted. On July twenty fifth, several new law changes, or excuse me, several new laws changing the way law enforcement does business went into effect. Uh, or excuse me, several new laws changing the way law enforcement does business went into effect. We've worked hard to ensure the public, or the safety of the public has not been affected. Due to the fact that the laws have, were poorly written. And the sponsors of the bills have admitted that they do not intend the bills to say what they say. Safety of the public could be jeopardized. Uh, the bill states law enforcement agencies are required to provide less lethal options for law enforcement. But the bill specifically states the law, or states law enforcement is prohibited from having ammunition larger than a fifty caliber. Less lethal rounds, um. Start at around a point seven eight one, so almost fifty percent larger than what we're allowed to have. Um, this puts law enforcement in a predicted, or predicament. Since we are required to provide less lethal options, but not allowed to provide the ammunition for the less lethal, um, options.
That just, whoever wrote that.
Well, and they've, and they've admitted that they've, they've come out and said that's not what their intent was for it.
Well. I can see them saying that you can't have a, a fifty caliber rifle. Uh, because that, that's kind of, you know.
But it was, I, I believe that the, well, what they've said is the intent on that related to. Uh, military equipment, and there's a lot of stuff specific about military equipment in that. And. I had to ask the question, is a less, is like a beanbag round or a less lethal round, is that even considered ammunition? And yes, it is. It is considered that, so, um, they've asked the Attorney General's Office to come out with an opinion stating that that is different. But. In the, in the meantime, I think that even, even once that come out, comes out, I think the way that. The wording is until the wording's changed, we're kind of stuck. Um.
Some made a policy decision on whether you're taking the beanbag.
So we're still in discussion on that. Um, so some law enforcement agencies in the state are removing beanbags and less lethal shotguns from their patrol vehicles. While other agencies are leaving beanbags, but less lethal shotguns in their patrol vehicles. This is a situation where we could get sued if we don't provide them to our employees. And we could also get sued if we do provide them to our employees, so it's basically like, uh. We're screwed either way, um, and some of the discussions that we've had are. If we get into a lethal situation and we didn't provide. Uh, less lethal option for our employees like at the beanbag rounds. What is the potential liability on the county? If we take that position as opposed to. If we provide them, they use them, save the person's life and then the person hires an attorney to sue the county.
And I'm assuming you're having conversations.
We have had some conversations about that, yes. Um. Additionally, the laws, or the law changes affect vehicle pursuits. The law severely limits when we can conduct, uh, vehicle pursuits. The law requires that a supervisor has to authorize the law enforcement officer prior to initiating the vehicle pursuit. And the law also requires the supervisor to have control over the pursuit. This may affect, or may have an effect on how we staff. The sheriff's office and how our ranking structure is set up. So right now, we have what's called a duty supervisor. So in the event that we don't have a sergeant on duty, then it falls on a duty supervisor. And I know that there were some uni- union negotiations and some discussions. That have been had where the supervisors can, on their days off, can, you know, go to Portland, go to Vancouver. Or run the errands that they need and as long as they have their, their cellphone with them and they're accessible. Then that satisfied what the county, uh, expected of them. So if they are to leave the area. And be expected to have control over that pursuit, I would think there could be. Uh, some issues down the road that know they didn't have control to pursue, because they weren't even in the same state. So. Um, we'll have to have some discussions in a further. Further point, whether that means we look at, uh, maybe some corporal positions where they assume. The sergeant's role when the sergeant's not there. I think these will be things brought up in the, um. In negotiations, so just things to plan, plan ahead. Uh, some major changes affecting, um. Any of the commission employees dealing with decertification to the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission. So I, I prepared this report last week and in that same week. Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission sent out notification to law enforcement. Officers and corrections officers regarding all employees agree. To give the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission access to any social media sites. And anyone refusing to provide access to social media sites may face, may face decertification hearings. The Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission is also requiring employees of law enforcement agencies. To sign a waiver releasing personal files, that disciplinary. Ter- uh, termination, civil and criminal investigations or other records or information. That are direct related, directly related to any certification or decertification related to the law enforcement. Officers employment. So. I brought mine with me, I signed mine, cause I have nothing on it. Says, I understand this is an application for certification to, to the commission and hereby attest. That I have read and understand the requirements of RCW forty-three, one oh one, zero nine five. And that I have met all the requirements and prerequisites for certification. I have also reviewed and acknowledged the condition, or excuse me, the conditions contained in RCW forty-three, one oh one, one oh five. Which may lead to the denial or revocation of my certification. I hereby authorize and consent to a release of my personal files. Including disciplinary termination, civil and criminal investigation. Or other rec- uh, records of informa- or information. That are directly, directly related to any certification or decertification matter before the commission. I further consent and agree to facilitate a review of any of my social media accounts. Immediately upon the request of a representative of the commission. I understand that failure to facilitate such a review. When requested may result in a decertification action. So then I, yes, penalty of perjury, so. At the end of that.
Have you heard in your department of any pushback on that?
Yes. Every, so the union, uh, my understanding is the union's position is that they are not to sign that. Uh, the Fraternal Order of Police has said not to sign it, there are other, um, agencies out there. That are recommending that law enforcement doesn't sign it, and I guess there is case law. That this goes against where it says that, uh. Outside of their personal, or excuse me, outside of their professional possessions. Uh, their cell phones or social media and there's some other things listed in there like, uh, emails and things of that nature on their private, uh, stuff. Is not subject to review by the agencies, so. I don't know the specific on that, but I am aware that, uh, uh, there's a lot of pushback. From that, not just in our agency, it's statewide.
Right. Um.
The, this might be more a question to prosecute, what happens if people are not compliant and don't, they refuse to sign it?
So I, I would think that if they're decertified, then they can't work because of law enforcement, that's right.
I, I don't know, they have to get details, but it is like an affirm that if they lose their certification, they cannot, um.
Yeah.
Be employed.
Right. So.
It's really gonna fall on the certification, I mean, on what action they take if they have widespread non-compliance.
Yeah, and there is, there is a deadline, I think it's, uh, is it October? It's, uh, October, November, or something like that to sign, I think it was October, I, and I read through it and I. Uh, what I did is I looked at my own account, like, I've never really looked at my social media account, see what I have. I don't have anything in any of my accounts that I would ever be worried about, so. Uh, due to the changes in the laws related to law enforcement, reserve, reserve deputy Ryan Florrie withdrew from the hiring process. After passing the background investigation, the polygraph. To accept a position, uh, with the Cootney County Sheriff's Office in Coraline, Idaho. So Ryan has been working as a seasonal law enforcement officer for Cootney County. And after the law changes in Washington State, Ryan decided to seek a law enforcement job outside of Washington State. Around the same time, Ryan was approached. Uh, from the Cootney County Sheriff's Office and asked to take a full-time position. Ryan has been a very valuable asset to the Quikert County Sheriff's Office during the two years. He volunteered with Quikert County Sheriff's Office. We wish Ryan, Ryan well in his new endeavor. So he was a reserve deputy for us, uh, volunteered a lot of his time and was excited to come over full-time. Um, some of the laws, um, were just coming out when, uh, he accepted. The job with us, uh, we did his background investigation, we paid for his polygraph. Um, and he was, uh, scheduled to do a psychological exam within about a week at that time. And he just decided that, uh. Looking at the laws, he would look outside of Washington. So, I did look at the pay scale and they. Pay about a third less than we do where he's going, so. It was a, a tough decision for him. Uh, on August first, two thousand twenty-one, Sergeant Joe Rigger celebrated twenty-one, or excuse me, twenty-eight years with the Quikert County Sheriff's Office. August first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, Deputy Mitch Kegley celebrated twenty-four years with Quikert County Sheriff's Office. August first, two thousand twenty-one, Pat Kaylee celebrated twenty-one years with Quikert County Sheriff's Office. And August first, two thousand twenty-one. Detective Jason Ray Talk celebrated twenty years with Quikert County Sheriff's Office. Currently, nine of our eighteen commissioned law enforcement positions are eligible for retirement. Based on age and or time of service. So, uh, we do have one retirement, um, he has set the date of December thirtieth. That's Deputy Jim Lanter, he's been with us for twenty. Plus years, yes, uh, over twenty years, I believe. And, uh, he worked for the Benjamin White Salmon Police Department prior to that. Um, we do have, uh, two additional. Um, patrol positions that have expressed that sometime next year they are hanging it up. And, um, we've started to hear from a few other people that are discussing. Um, it takes about a year from the time that we post a position and test for. That person to get hired before that person, you know, we put them through the background investigation. Then we send them to the academy, then once they're out of the academy, they go through an FTO process. From beginning to end, we actually don't know whether they will make it or not. But once they make it, it, uh, it's usually a year from the time that they started the testing process. Before we can fill that position, so. Um, and then I'll refer everything back over to Kurtman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On July nineteenth, uh, we received word that James Saunders, uh, one of our corporals and his girlfriend Sarah welcomed the birth of their son. Uh, they're in Florida where Sarah resides and we're all anxious to hopefully get that baby back up here so we can see him. I'm not sure how James made it down there, he worked on the eighteenth, so it must have been a very quick flight to, uh, Florida. Chris Ballasteros, uh, has been providing me with weekly updates from CJTC. He is in his seventh week of the academy. He's enjoying his curriculum and he's excited to come back and share everything that he's learning. And he's on target to graduate in September, I believe their target date for graduation is the tenth. We haven't heard if they're doing any in-person graduations, um, the last graduation was. A drive-through parking lot graduation. I'm not quite sure how that worked, I did not attend that. On July seventeenth, Civil Service conducted a test for the Control Board and Civil Clerk Position. We had a good turnout and we interviewed five candidates for the Control Board Position. We asked two of them to return for second interview. I was really torn between two, so I had my sergeant and corporal interview both of them, we've now given a conditional offer to. Uh, Danielle Goodman, um, she's a lifelong resident of Goldendale and should be a good fit, so she's. Got our packet and she will be, uh, going through the background process. On July twenty-fourth, the Civil Service conducted another Corrections Deputy Test. And we once again have an active list of candidates. Corrections Deputy Anderson remains in his current position, but he is actively seeking employment. On the west side to join his wife where she took a position over. Believe like at Arlington, somewhere up in there, uh, I do know that. Uh, Anderson has an interview with Marysville Police or Jail, uh, this next week or two. On July twenty-seventh, Wade Zelinski was charged in Superior Court with assault three. The victim in this case was Corporal Brandon Walter, this was the third assault case against Mr. Zelinski since he had been in our custody. Mr. Zelinski is considered an extreme officer safety risk and he's closely monitored at all times.
On August. Length, what is the? Likely, uh, length of his stay in our facility?
Uh, well, I was gonna get to that. On, so yesterday he had court, he pled guilty to that third assault. He was sentenced to a year and a day, so.
Oh.
He is scheduled to be, uh, sent off to prison, uh. Here shortly.
Okay.
Um, so that was good news for our staff. Um, on August first. Eric Glover was officially hired as our casual in the jail. Eric is familiar with the jail and its functions while he served as a KCSO Reserve Deputy. And we welcome the extra help and the knowledge that he brings back into the jail. Um, Eric has a photographic memory, so he never forgets anything, so he just walked in and went to work, it was pretty nice. Uh, just after four AM on August tenth, Corporal and Corrections Deputies were on a routine exterior patrol of the courthouse. Um, it was Corporal Walter and Corrections Deputy Sunday House. Uh, while in the rear parking lot area near Grand Court Street, they heard a female yelling. They located a ninety-seven-year-old female that had fallen near the construction site. Uh, female was found with some injuries and due to the time of the morning, she was also cold from being exposed for an unknown amount of time. It's my understanding, she'd probably been out there about three to four hours.
Where was she at?
Right over here in this area.
Like she tried to come up the sidewalk?
Not, not sure, she lives in, I believe it's the lady that lives in the little single wide right back here. Cause I know she, and I don't know if she's got dementia or what, um.
At that time of night.
Right, um, so they ran and grabbed a blanket, uh, of course, called nine-one-one and the medics and law enforcement were dispatched and she was. Uh, transported to KBH, I don't know the outcome of that, uh, we, we never get that information. Uh, but had they not heard her and out been doing their job, that definitely would have had a. Far worse outcome. Is, it is important to note that the correction staff routinely checked the outside perimeter of the entire courthouse during the nighttime hours. They find unlocked cars, you'd be amazed at how many people, you know, park the. Vehicle back here and then forget to lock it, so they come across that. Um, on August nineteenth, our tactical development will provide a dynamic cell extraction training for the Corrections Division. This training was advertised through CJTC and has had a positive response throughout the state. Currently, we have seventeen enrolled for the course, ten of those are from agencies located throughout the state. I know as far away right now as Snohomish County is coming in this week for this training. Uh, Courts, the Posse continues to assist a court. Uh, Security Force, Superior Court, East District Court and West District Court. Judge Kroeg has requested security now during all of the court proceedings, uh, like we were doing pre-COVID. And with our current staffing situation, I'm only able to provide this level of security using the Posse. They are an asset to our department, providing service not only to the courts but to the public. I do not have the number of volunteer hours currently for court security, but I will be, those hours calculated. Um, so this week, uh, today, this week I've got upstairs court. Four days this week and we also have a trial in West District, so Posse is supplying all the security for that. I'm finalizing the purchase of a phone for our video courtroom located in the jail. I had, um, been in conversation with Judge Baker. And this will allow the attorneys and inmates to have confidential phone conversations during. Phone hearings with West District Court, it will also allow us to. Save all those weekly trips to West District, uh, for court appearances. He purchased a cellphone for the attorneys to use down there, so it'll be a confidential. Attorney-client, um, during court for them. That'll reduce our costs for overtime transport, wear and tear on our vehicle fuel. A number of arrests on warrants on the. Out of county is on the rise and I attribute this to the summer weather and traveling is more leisurely with fewer restrictions from COVID. Our agency has traveled to Benton County, Yakima County, Kidittas County and Wasco County. And will continue to work with agencies across. And will continue to work with agencies across Washington, Oregon. Moving inmates with warrants to various facilities. Keeping a working relationship with agencies has proven beneficial when we have subjects. Across both Oregon and Washington with our warrants and making transportation arrangements. Having that working relationship has been vital in like transporting with DOC and. We had a gentleman in on a marshal's warrant last week. They were gonna come down and get him, but we were already going up north, so we just dropped him. We're going to the same facility, so it made more sense. And. I have to say, I think that's really helpful, if I have somebody on the far east side, I can get them moved usually pretty. Quickly because they know that we cooperate with everybody on the chain, so. We're getting the benefits of the chain and not so much incurring all the costs like we were when we're on the chain. Mental health services continue to be needed on an established schedule for the inmates. We have several who benefit from a weekly counseling session to maintain balanced mental health. Oftentimes, you know, they come in and they've been with mental health services, those of course go away while they're incarcerated, so. Anything they gained is then lost. So we could continue to have inmates who arrive in a mental health crisis. They're refusing medications and they remain isolated for their safety and staff safety. I have one gentleman who's been isolated for months and months and months, but. We've had a few people who've been able to incorporate with them, we have to be very leery of him assaulting somebody. But it's not good to have them isolated either. I've got one right now in crisis and trying to get him. We're gonna have conference come back and see him today and hopefully get him committed under greatly disabled. He's refusing to eat and drink, and so it's all documented and I'm also working with his attorney on getting a commitment order for him. Through the courts for competency evaluation, so he's a direct threat for public, for our safety. He's very aggressive and could be a real problem child, we had to call him backup last week and he was put into. Our restraint, the wrap for a number of hours, because he was trying, he was bashing his head on the wall. Brian B continues to field all of our calls, texts and emails from daily from staff. And getting the approval of medications, refills, medical emergencies, any any other questions a teammate had for inmates. I do have to say, we have not had the ambulance this week at the jail. We've had many medical emergencies in jail this month. The resulted in the ambulance in the facility three times. Out of the three, only one inmate was transported without a full-time nurse or medical staff. Inmates rely on the knowledge and quick thinking of the correction staff. And they are quick to grab a blood pressure cuff and get vital so that we can give the medics and stuff, because that's all information that they're asking. They regularly check blood, blood sugars, blood pressure, dispense medications and attend to minor injuries such as cut scrapes and sprains. I spent the past month addressing our current policy and procedure manual for the Corrections Division. The new legislative decisions that went into effect recently directly impact the way we operate our facility. Hospital thirteen-ten at this time does not include our corrections deputies, but it does affect road deputies and city officers. Who we rely on for backup. Currently, we are following the conversations between Wasps and the legislators to see how to make the necessary changes to our policy. It's gonna be, take a while for all that to play into effect, so. I don't know how soon that part of the policy will be finalized. I'm also updating the evacuation procedures for the jail to be consistent with our policy manual. Is imperative to have a plan in place or a flex policy provides a safe and secure environment for the inmates and staff and keeps it public safe during an emergency. I'll be working with various departments within the county and seeking input from other surrounding jails. I've already talked with Public Works and Security Building at Fairgrounds that we could evacuate to on a, like a, you know, couple hours. Short-term event while we got things squared away to move inmates to another jail or certain inmates released. I am meeting also this next week with. No home, the fire chief for Goldendale, part of the fire. Plan for the facility is to have a pre-plan with the fire department, so we're gonna work on that. So we'll have hopefully all that finalized in the next couple months. We provide, we provided two inmates who qualified for an outside work crew to assist buildings and grounds with some work at the fairgrounds. In previous years, this has been an easy task, however, we haven't had as many opportunities to assist with our limited number of inmates. This is a good opportunity for inmates to work outside, provide a service to the community. The two that went outside were grateful to get outside and spend some time outdoors and some sunshine. The jail population has been fluctuating between fifteen and twenty-five inmates on a steady basis. And while the population remains low, the amount of work has not decreased. We found that the inmates we are housing required far more attention due to mental health and behavior issues. These type of inmates increase amount of time we respond to out-of-control behavior resulting in increased report writing and documentation. It has been absurd, these people that are in there just demand so much more. Attention than if we were full and had forty-nine people or more. It's, the workload is not decreased, it's just increasing, the amount of court paperwork just seems to be increasing. Housing mentally ill people in jails is familiar scene, not only in our state but nationwide and with the mental health laws, the lack of services. And the reduction in mental health hospitals, the person with mental illness suffers. Families also are directly affected, the members of law enforcement and corrections patrol and dispatchers are also feeling the strain. It is a community that sees repercussions from a failed system. This just, it's only gonna get worse with the new laws, especially the drug laws. Now they're just self-medicating and they can get by with it, it's legal for them to have the drugs, so. It's very frustrating. Lastly, I'd like to mention that we resolved a longstanding transportation issue following the release of an inmate from custody. Frequently, the inmates do not have family or friends who can bring them a ride home once released. And we've been able to purchase tokens through the Mount Adams Correctionation and obtain the bus schedules that allow us to adjust. Their release times, so. Bus tokens are a dollar a piece, we purchased a hundred dollars worth of them. And now we just adjusted, we can adjust their release time so they're they're during a period where they can catch a bus. Cause otherwise there's either hitchhiking or begging for a ride home or walking, that's not always safe, so. Or sleeping, or sleeping in the jail lobby, yes, so. Also, we were talking about courts yesterday. Wade Zelinski pled out to the one year and one day on his custody assault, that's the third custody assault. He had been, he pled out on. Since his arrival.
What was he originally in for?
I think about twelve probation violations. He had, he had multiple charges out of East District Court. And all of those were probation and then they charged him with like five probation charges on this cause number and twelve, it was very confusing. Travis G was sentenced on eight-two in Cluck Tech County Superior Court. To thirty-three months for domestic violence court order violation. And so he will be sent off in this round, DOC only transports every other week, so we have. Varying weeks so we can haul them away. Yesterday, Darryl Dean Coleman was sentenced to Cluck Tech County Superior Court to ninety months. On burglary in the first degree, ninety months on theft of a firearm and ninety months on theft of a firearm. Those are all to run concurrently together, so he will also be going away to DOC for quite a while. That's about all I have for now, staying busy. I brought actually, like this is our schedule, this next week, I've, so I'm relying now on Posse, my. Casual and deputies to help fill in shifts and they're covering one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Eleven shifts for me. And that's not including all the other overtime shifts that my guys are also working, it's just been brutal. There's no way I'm gonna get back on to court security at this point, we just don't have. As long as I'm providing security.
They're okay.
They're okay with it, in fact, they sent us an email. Thinking as for the, what a great job that the Posse was doing. His Posse is, they're here every day. And they're all volunteers. Yeah, so saving the county. A lot of money. Cause if I had to start paying out overtime to bring in somebody every time I need court security, which is for. Four days this week and in this court and one day in West District Court. Then that's gonna start adding up quickly and I'd probably start having some very disgruntled employees. Cause they would never have a day off. And I can't do that to them. They're already working. At least two to three overtime shifts prepared, paid period.
So I have no question. What does law enforcement in the state, I guess it might be you. What does law enforcement in this state, are they mandated to do with replacement firearms? So the old ones you get rid of when you get new ones, can they go on an auction block or do they have to be destroyed or?
I think that we, yeah, I think we get. We go through like a company, we basically go out and get bits for. Surplusing them, I believe.
Like a trade-in?
Yes, well, I think we can do either trade-in or we can do, or you go through a company that specifically serves.
So then I just garbage, we get. Down the basement. Which, which brings up the next question. You have new vests on the agenda, which I probably would. What happens to all this?
There's a, there's a shelf life on those vests, so once you go past the, I think it's five years. And I know mine was seven years, so. Two years ago, we tried to get me a new vest and we had some issues with the company measuring, you know, we provided all the measurements, they lost them, so. We've had some people that were behind that.
Are we going to put those expired vests on the county surplus auction?
I would think there'd be some liability if the county sold those and somebody put those on. And then something happened while they had those on. Something might come back, I, I don't think. I, I think what we normally do is we give them. I, I think what we actually do is the firearms instructors take them out and use them for training props. So that they're able to, cause they're, they're garbage, you can't do anything with them. So I think they take them out and they shoot them up. To show people what the vest will do and so I, I believe there is a use for them. And the new ones are incredibly thin compared to what we used to have.
I would, yeah.
About half the weight.
Looking at the, the cost and researching the, what they were.
They're, they're not cheap, but they are, they're a necessity for our job, they save a lot of lives.
Do you have plates in them or no plates?
That we've got some different types of plates.
And they're lightweight.
Yeah, and I believe that we have.
We have an intent to order some of the heavier plates.
Two things, the front plate, the stop plate. Will be in next year's budget. And which is. Thick of protection.
Right, and they're rifle rated. For those thick plates, and some of us have spent our own money to buy. Those, just in case we get in a situation, you know, I spent, I spent close to a thousand dollars on some pretty heavy-duty stuff. My, my life was worth it.
The jail staff this year was able to purchase. Best custom fitted for the first time. So grateful, cause the ones before, like Sergeant Gillen would sit down. And it would come up here, you look like a turtle, it was, and it's impossible to drive in, and so these are very. They're just like the deputy staff and what a difference, they're all like wearing their vests to work now and they're all super happy. And now they're safe.
I'm assuming they don't get bulletproof.
Yes, they do, absolutely.
And they're, they're as big of a target.
The steel plates rated for rifle rounds?
What if they're on a transport? What if they're standing outside the courtroom, absolutely, that's what they should have.
They, they are as big of a target as we are. If not bigger.
We go on transports across the state and you don't know who's out there. There's a lot that can happen on a transport, especially a high-risk transport, which we do.
Ambushes are happening all over the country for law enforcement.
Which is one more reason that we haven't had our AR training, but we are putting the rifles into our transport vehicles.
Hopefully after you have.
Uh, yes, that's why they're not in there yet. Anything else? I would like to mention that I'm currently working with Tim and. I'll be speaking with Bob, we're having, we're gonna be reviewing the meals for the jail. Just so you're aware, we are not under contract with Airmark and have not been for a number of years. I asked him for a contract a couple of years ago that I could present, they've never shown me one. We're having some issues with the meals, lots of complaints, I brought up a meal this morning. I'm getting pictures of all the meals this week, so that we can, we need to figure something out.
Look at the quality.
It's the quality, it's the amount of food. I think if we had a better quality of food that was. A healthier nutritious meal than just the carbs and stuff that they're getting. Would also cut down on our cost for gastro medications that we are constantly purchasing for inmates.
And possibly assault.
Uh, yeah.
If, if we wouldn't eat the food, why would we force somebody else to?
Yeah, it's bad.
I'm, I'm not trying to say we need to make, you know.
They don't need steak, but they need that.
They need something that is edible.
Yeah.
Cause I, I've, I've seen the food over the years and I wouldn't touch that steak.
They're not getting the fresh fruits and vegetables or anything like that that they really should have. I've constantly questioned their diabetic diets. I went to culinary school, I had a mother who was a dietitian in a hospital, I understand diet. When you feed somebody who's a diabetic, a meal that is noodles. That is not a diabetic diet, that turns to sugar, which makes your blood, blood sugars go up. It should be a high protein, low carb, not a high carb, low protein, so. So we're doing some research, I've been in communication with Airmark and of course our local cooks too, so. Just so you know, something's gonna be hopefully coming down the line. I just don't know how long it'll take.
It might be a cost savings too.
Yeah, my fat fingers could cross, would be crossed.
Looking at everything.
Maybe that's what they need to do. On the jail food diet or something.
Well, the Joe food diet is, you get it, you look at it, you throw it away.
All right. I don't have anything, so. All right, thank you guys, have a great day.
Keep trucking out there.
Now, are you going to be attending the Glenwood?
I will be at the Glenwood one tonight, yes.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move into that discussion as far as. How we're planning on the format or how, how we're gonna kind of run the meeting, cause it is a, this is a town hall meeting. So I guess we're at least my perspective, it will, it will principal, it'll be. You know, it's a board meeting, but we obviously. We'll have other folks there as well. And so I will try to facilitate, I'm not really expecting, you know, this is at least from my perspective, and that's what I want to hear from folks, is that we would just kind of. Give a brief update as far as for the, you know, if somebody was living under a rock that was unaware, so just a real, just a quick. Where we're at as far as kind of what's going on. And then at least for me, I'm there mostly just to solicit some feedback from the community, because the board and all of us need to make a decision here. Pretty quick on what's our next action. Cause no action is an action.
Sure.
Cause we're on, we're on timeframes and so. And I'll, you know, we'll just give an opportunity for the community to comment or and ask questions if we can, if we can reasonably answer them to the best. I'm not, I'm gonna try to keep it fairly. Short as far as, cause I, I think I learned a lesson from the previous time that, you know, I'm always an advocate of just let them go until they. Run out, but, but eventually, it's, I would, I would say in retrospect, it was about an hour too long.
Run out, but, but eventually it was, I would, I would say in retrospect, it was about an hour or two long. And so I'm gonna avoid that. And I don't know how many people we're gonna have, it is fair week, I did have some. Pushback from folks about it, it's fair, it's like I reckon, we understood that when we were scheduling it, but we're up against the timeframe and.
We didn't realize the street court imposed the emergency rule extending some of the timeframe. So we have ninety days from any denial over. So we have currently a request for a full hearing before the board. The ninth panel, so in long consideration. We, if it was gonna be straightforward denial, probably would have gotten that already, so there's something going on. In any event, if we do get denial, we have ninety days.
Not thirty days.
Right.
Okay.
Ninety days from that. Issues of the denial. If it's not a denial, then it'll probably be several months more.
Right.
Before uh, the cert deadline is triggered or is triggered. So as of right now, we have. I, if it is a denial at this point, uh, probably be about September first, so we have ninety days from September first to. File the cert, so obviously can't wait till day sixty to decide to do it. But it is, you know, quite a bit more generous than the thirty day timeframe that is the norm. Just wanted to. Get out there.
Thank you, that, make sure I'm not saying things that are.
Cause I did have questions on, because of fair, can we hold another one? And I'm like, well, I don't, we might, who knows, but you can always call us personally, you can always. Send an email, you know, I'll be at the fair every day, come.
What, what effort is being made to ensure a safe environment tonight? We had these.
Yeah. I know.
We have what, ninety-one active cases in the counties of yesterday. This is the worst, the worst it's ever been in the county.
I am aware there's gonna be a lot of people there. So I've heard from a number of people that are planning on going. I've had people reach out and ask if I was gonna go, if the sheriff was gonna be there and wanted to know, so.
The numbers are spiking, it's very weak, the sheriff apparently will not be there. At this point, I'm borderline on whether I'm going to find John.
Well, I would, I, you know, my plan was that I would reach out to the, to the health director and get some guidances, what, what can we or. Shouldn't. Do or not do. As far as, could I, you know.
I'm fully vaccinated, I carry masks in my vehicle, so if we get up there and the school says stop, get a mask on, I have extra masks that I can share with other people.
I'd say I never thought about that, we'll be in the school, there's a mask mandate at the school, so.
Yeah. So, and I, I've been, I've tried to be as flexible as I can.
Prepared for that.
Yeah, I've tried to be as flexible as I can with respecting what schools want and what other places want.
I appreciate it, they're talking about.
Yeah.
Always hard in public comment, because you gotta try to understand people's mask. It's not always easy.
Right.
And frankly, I'm not going to answer questions about the details of.
Of the case or.
Assessments of. Chances that. Most of my answers are gonna be non-answers, I'm not sure how productive that'll be.
I. I've had a lot of questions that people called in about, you know, what's the sheriff's office doing, how do they respond to these different things? And we had a, we had a case last year that I was called out, I was a detective at the time and I was called out to investigate, it was a rape case. From a descendant of a tribal member, but the tribe said, no, it's not, not something we're gonna get involved in. The suspect was a tribal member, I went up and I just told people, I'm not here for the politics, I'm just here to figure out what happened. And wherever the case goes, we'll get that handled. And uh, some of the tribal officers actually showed up and stood by while I did all the work. We got that person where they needed to go, the FBI ended up taking the case. And uh, they were able to get a warrant, get arrested, everything like that. But everybody that was involved was very appreciative of the way that we handled that. So I have some experience in dealing with some of the cases up there and I know some of the concerns that. People have, they wanna know if the sheriff's office is gonna continue to patrol up there, if they stop a non-tribal member, they have to let the person go, how the response is gonna be, so.
Right, right.
On a board perspective, one of the main reasons we're having this. Is, is, there is the education part, but it's also a. I guess I would say hearing from the citizens on where they would like us to go.
Right.
On this, and I think that's kind of somewhat split.
Sure.
But, you know, that's kind of hard to. Give them all the facts. To give us an educated choice, when we really, we probably shouldn't give them all of the facts.
Right.
On this.
Have that mission.
And, or best guess.
Yes, but that's, but they're.
Probably things that we shouldn't even be talking about, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, for me, I'm not, I, I think, when I talk about questions, I'm not talking about specifics. Picking fielding questions on the case and that kind of stuff, it's more the, because the, the law is currently the law.
Right.
And we have, there's some jurisdictional questions that, as you said, as far as how law enforcement, how is the county handling that? If we get a building permit and there's what, what's, what are we doing right now? And so just to kind of update people, because I would assume some of their response is gonna be predicated on. What is it now versus what it would be? You know, if this stands the way it is, then, you know, have things really significantly changed and. You know, so that, that would make a difference to me as a, as a person that lived there.
Yeah.
And um. But even that, we don't have tons of answers because we, we've had, we have situations that haven't arisen yet. That for the most part, things are business as usual, but we don't know. And, and that's not because there's no injunction, there's nothing, it is, you know, the lower ruling is in force right now. And, but for, you know, things that have been. You know, for whatever reason, the, you know, tribal government has either chosen or that is their position that. They're fine with it being just business as usual when it comes to this stuff.
Sure.
So, um, but we really haven't had any interaction with them and that's, that's, you know, I see long term regardless of what we do. It is inevitable, there is going to be joint management taking place in that area and we're gonna have to figure that out. And we haven't, we haven't done that yet. So. But I don't know, did you, were you able to get Aaron on?
He's on.
Okay. Hi, Aaron, yeah, we were just having a discussion about, you know, we're, we're scheduled to have this public uh, town hall in Glenwood tonight. We have some concerns. Given the, you know, what's going on with our numbers.
Does she know the numbers for Glenwood?
That's right. I, I pulled them up so that I'd have them. So there hasn't been a case that we're aware of in Glenwood for nineteen days, it looks like, there's not a lot of spread there. I can't in good conscience recommend any large group gatherings that don't include masks or distancing, I know that's not the. Regulation right now by any stretch of the imagination, but just based on how quickly we're seeing COVID spread right now and how easily it's spread. Um, I, I would ask that that be considered, uh, while understanding that there is no requirement to have that in place.
You know, will it make a difference, because we're meeting in the school, are there, because I know there are in school buildings.
Guidelines, so yes, it would have to happen because.
Yeah, I think if you're in.
Present.
Yeah, I think if you're on school property, I think per their um. Liability insurance and that sort of their rules that you would be required to wear masks in a school, no matter what.
I don't, I don't know, that is, that is contrary to my understanding in at least one district that it is. It is keyed to if. Students are present, but that may have been modified.
Uh, there, there is that caveat that if students are present, I know part of that is for um, like teachers that are working through the summer.
Right.
Kind of a scenario, so each school has a different, and I would just maybe reach out to them, uh, there is some different language about how they. Approach having a community event versus having, you know, just your teacher in your classroom doing their thing versus having students in the school, so. It's a little bit more of a complex answer, I guess.
Okay. So obviously your recommending, recommendation that is, is. People should be distant and, and wearing masks, even if that's.
Yeah, I mean, we have fair, there's, there's just a lot going on, school's about to start, we've got the fair, I know, you know, people want to make their own choices, which I definitely encourage, but. You know, I just think if, if there was a possibility to just have to ask at the beginning of the meeting, just say, hey, like, this is really spreading, this is really gonna impact our community, if you. Could please wear a mask, I think would be, you know. A, a decent way to ask, but. There is no requirement, but you have to do that.
As long as we state it, that it's a recommendation and not a requirement, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
And you know, there is no spread in Glenwood right now, but just uh, in a very much know your audience sort of way. There are a lot of other communities in, in the county that do have a lot of spread, so. If you're expecting people kind of from all over the community or all over the county, just anyway.
Right.
There that as well.
And a number of people that I have talked to are not from Glenwood that are going. Yeah, expect other topics.
We're not.
Same stuff you've been dealing with.
We're not going to.
They're gonna, my understanding is they're in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not. Yeah.
Well, is there some, I mean, let's have a discussion about that then, if we, now that the.
Turned into a protest mark, I'm not interested.
Well, and is it, is it too late, the, the problem I have is that we, the, the, the. Impetus for doing it right now was, has been removed for some, like, we thought we, we were gonna get an answer from the. And we would have to make, we would have thirty days, which is a really short timeframe to try to put something together for the US Supreme Court. Not that ninety days is a huge amount of time.
Ninety is not a huge amount of time.
But it is. It's insufficient, and ninety days is better, but my concern is that we postpone because of COVID. You know, is COVID worse, right, is it gonna be any better a month from now or a week from now or two weeks from now, I don't think so. So.
Some other places have had, dealt with different protests of various things and they'll start their meeting, they'll go through their stuff, if it becomes an issue. They literally give them a chance to stop, if they don't, then they just leave. And, you know.
Yeah.
I didn't know, just for taking a next spectacle.
No, I don't either. But I'm, I'm wondering from a logistical standpoint, is it if the, if the board changed its mind.
Yeah.
And said, we're gonna postpone, it's fair week, there's all the activity. Until they got there and people are still gonna show up, you know, we've noticed it, we've put it out there, we. At least, at the very least, somebody, if we decided to do that, somebody has to go to. Inevitably deal with the people that were, you know, rearrange their whole schedules to be there. And they're not, so. At least I for one, I will, I will go, even if we're. And I will advise people, you know, I'll ask them, it's the recommendation is to please.
Short time limited and.
And we're not going to take, um, you know, this is a topic specific. Meeting with the community and that's the only thing we're here to talk about.
They want to take some of the community members' time.
Right.
From their important issue in Glenwood. And shout over the top of them.
Well, we're not gonna have that.
Well, if, if we only are there for a certain period of time. Then protester would be the bad guy because he's taking the time away from the track D discussion we're there to have. So let's shorten it and um.
Okay. So that's, we'll do the best we can.
And that's at six thirty, right?
Six thirty. And I will, and that is even more. Pressure to me to make this as short as, you know, because any, again, it's. Limit exposure, limit the number of people, limit everything. And we'll just try to do that and people are happy, you wanna go outside and. You know, I, I don't know, I'm just gonna try to read the community too and be as.
I'm there to hear track D stuff.
Right.
And then to something else, I'm just gonna walk out.
Yeah, so that's what we'll do. You can write herd on the crowd.
They're not angry at the sheriff's office.
No. No, no, I don't think they're gonna be, I don't know what anybody's angry about as far as track D, what's to be angry about as far as with the board or anybody else. So it is what it is, but we were just hoping to get some feedback before we. Make a decision.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, we'll do our best.
Alright.
It'll be fine. And with that. If we can, I guess we will adjourn for lunch, folks on Zoom, we'll be back at one o'clock.
See you guys at one, or at six thirty?
Yeah.
No, now.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order, let the record show, all three commissioners are present, we will start first with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Was the chairman to make a motion to be approved, the business agenda that was presented?
Can I have a motion in a second on the business agenda, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. I don't think we, I don't think we're ready.
She had them ready.
Yeah. Okay, we will defer those till next week. That brings us to citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the board of commissioners. I would ask people to please limit their comments to three minutes per individual or less. We have folks in chambers and we have folks on Zoom, so we'll, we'll go back and forth, so I will take my first call in chambers, is there anybody? Go ahead. Tell me your name and community, apparently at your option.
Yes, of course.
As always.
My name is Ivy Vamare and my address is one twenty eight Big Springs Road. And um, I am here again to thank you for allowing me my three minutes. But I will be brief, because it is three minutes and I have timed it, so I know I stay within the realm of the, the time allotted. I have four items that I'd like to mention. Number one, two weeks ago, I've, I've been trying to attend the meetings every two weeks, um. So two weeks ago, I understood that you and the county uh, HR director. Stated that the position of the county code enforcement officer was a very high priority and had been approved and would be posted without haste. Due to the urgency of the items in need of attention, like the Steve Shield server's firing range. In checking the county's job postings this morning, I do not see this position listed yet. So I'm asking, what is the status and what is your expected posting date?
Um, I can tell you, I personally know the employee that typed out that. Job posting yesterday, I don't know that it's not on there, but I know it was done yesterday.
It's not, it's not on the postings up at the front door and it's not on the webpage, so.
Well, it. Might be today, I don't know, I'd have to ask, I just know yesterday it was talked about being created.
Great, wonderful. Uh, number two, as I'm reading and learning about county codes. I have discovered that there's also Washington State RCWs. Revised Code of Washington. And RCW code number seven point four eight point one three zero. Public nuisance defined reads a pub quote, a public nuisance is one which affects equally the rise of an entire community. Or neighborhood, although the extent of the damage may be unequal. My question to you is, how can this be applied to the violation before us, uh, the gun range? And does a complaint need to be registered with the state directly? And is this complaint come from our county commissioners or from the citizens of the state? So that's another question that I, I have.
Make sure I have, I wanna make sure, seven point four zero point one three zero.
Seven point four eight one three zero. There is also an RCW fifteen point eight three point zero five zero. That speaks of violations and complaints, and I have attached, I'll leave this with, with the, the, with the. It speaks to the complaints, I have, um, it speaks to quote, if any person is charged with a violation. An investigation shall occur. It goes on to say that if the preponderance of the evidence shows that the. It goes on to say that if the preponderance of the evidence shows that the person named in the complaint. Has engaged or is engaging in any prohibitive practice. An order requiring that person to cease and desist of the practice will occur, end of quote, and that's an RCW also. So just that's for for information purposes, so I'm I'm kind of discovering these things as I'm looking into this. And then finally, last week, we had a fire scare in our neighborhood. We're out Old Mountain Road. After making a call to rural seven, it appeared to be coming from just.
Finish your sentence.
Just got a few sentences here. Appeared to be coming from just northeast of our property. I headed out to investigate and the road directly north of our property is cattle drive. Which the gun range is on. This is one of the worst roads I have traveled in this county. It is dangerous, steep in places, full of full large loose rocks, holes that are not passable. That force a vehicle to drive off the road to get past. This is the road that dozens of customers of the gun range must drive. Another reason that this gun range is totally out of compliance. Again, thank you for your time and I appreciate your.
Will be able to leave a copy of that with the. Okay, we are in citizen comment. I will go to the. Zoom folks or on phone if you wish to provide public comment, please. Pat Arnold, you've had your hand up for a while, so you get to go first.
Thank you. Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted, go ahead.
Okay, I want to comment on the issue of the code compliance officer that's on your consent agenda. And while I completely understand the urgency of being able to address the issue that the previous speaker has raised. Repeatedly, and I really support that, I I'm gonna comment. My comment is that you should take it off your consent agenda today, that the job description and the department are not ready to see the light of day just yet. I appreciate your attempts to deal with this issue and I appreciate the spirit that you're doing it in. With the emphasis on understanding regulations, voluntary compliance and so on, but there's just a lot of questions. The question number one is. The department itself seems to me unwise, because for one thing, you're taking, you're doing five employees. And the reallocation from an existing department. I don't know that the funds are there, the financial analysis doesn't show that the funds are there. For this department to deal with the expanded list of complaints in departments other than the sanitary. And the building code nuisance, so that's one thing. I have questions about the capacity of the department and the funding for it. Also, more importantly, I think that there's an appearance. By establishing this department and not leaving compliance in the individual departments, there's an appearance of setting up a department. Which is going to be political in nature, which reports to and responds to commissioners, political priorities, not the. Not the regulatory stuff, so that bothers me and I, and I, I don't know, that's a problem. Compliance is an art, it's not a science, as we all know, and your department is going to be required to. To understand many regulations in many areas, and this is a complicated and, and, and difficult body of knowledge. As your job description acknowledges, and I just feel like. You know, and the also other thing I want to say is the emphasis on voluntary, of course, we want voluntary compliance. We want voluntary willing compliance, we want people to understand that they're complying with a regulation because there's a reason for that regulation. That's for the public benefit, but I don't know that you really want to have voluntary compliance to building codes and nuisance things. And sanitary and septic requirements, and I feel like the job description is too heavy. On the voluntary and not heavy enough on the knowledge and the, the substance of this position. So I'm going to stop there because I think I'm pretty close to my three minutes, but I, I, I just feel like it's a valiant effort. And I appreciate that you're making it and I want you to deal with this issue of the, of the gun club. But I feel like this is too, you're moving too fast, that's all, thank you.
Perfect timing there, Ms. Arnold, you're just running out of time. Okay, we are still in citizen comment, I'll come back to the room.
My name's Greg Wagner, living Golden Dale and with C's. Like to ask Mr. Anderson, on August third, when Cypress Creek came here, did you meet with them before the six o'clock meeting? The public meeting they held? Mr. Christopher, did you meet with the representatives from Cypress Creek on August the third? In two thousand and ten, when the wind farms met the one thousand megawatts of electricity generated. You opened the EOZ and made changes to the EOZ. Is that correct, Ms. Musa?
I believe so.
So you made the changes, you were willing to open up the EOZ and make changes then. Now that we have the solar issue, you say you won't open up the EOZ. When we could do that and your past record shows you are able to do that. Why not open up the EOZ and put some ordinances in there? You can amend that current EOZ, we don't have to create anything new and add the ordinances in there for solar. You did it for wind, why can't you do it for solar?
I'm going to respond. Although it's probably ill advised.
I'll say it if you don't want to.
No, no, I would say that the, the opening of the EOZ at a thousand megawatts was part of, that was a settlement agreement. Between the county and folks that the county agreed to, to look at that and the. There was not any significant substantive changes made to the EOZ when it was opened up. Anything that is substantive would require a new. SEPA determinations, you know, anything that happened that would, would be anything significant, which as I think. From my perspective, what you're suggesting would be pretty significant and it would have to go through a full review process.
When I talked to Mooji, the planning director, she told me at that time is when they instituted the five hundred to fifteen hundred foot setback on.
For wind, you mean?
No, she said it's, it's right on the EOZ, it is for solar. Nineteen point three eight, I believe is where it's at, or three nine. And it's, she told me that prior to that, there wasn't setbacks like that. And that's when the setback occurred, maybe I'm mistaken, but I believe I talked to her and she told me that. But she said there, well, there were changes made at that time, some, you said the other day, well, in, on May eleventh. That you tweaked the tweak the EOZ, so I don't know what tweak means to you, but that means change to me. So now we're at the. All along, the board has said, we don't know about any plans, there's no plans before you for a solar site, a night road. So my question is, how can you write a CUP for something that doesn't exist? You wrote a CUP for any energy facility connecting to the Night Road substation. How can you write an ordinance resolution like that if you don't know any plans for any solar at Night Road?
We know rumors of plants.
Man said, there are no plans before the county. So I'd like to know, how can you write a CPU for something that doesn't exist?
I just said, based off rumors.
But you shouldn't base a big decision for a CUP off of rumors. He wrote the resolution about any energy facility connecting to the Night Road substation.
If solar goes in up there and hooks to the Night Road substation, the Night Road substation is not part of the EOZ. So any solar hooking to it would have to go for a conditional use permit process.
Now, well, the, the conditional use is said that it's supposed to be to protect the citizens. We have the public hearings on solar, during the moratorium, many people spoke up. Don't keep the moratorium in place and want ordinances and that was all ignored. So our public comment during the CUP process, how's it going to be any different?
Your time is. Okay, I will, we're still in citizen comment, I will go to the folks online. So unmute yourself, get our attention. Sherry is, okay, Sherry, go ahead, if we can have your name.
Good afternoon, commissioners, this is Sherry, I'm from Houston. Did I just hear correctly that the commissioners are stating that any. Solar project connecting to the Night Road substation will require a conditional use permit?
That was what we signed an ordinance months ago, yes.
Okay, do you by chance have that ordinance number? If not, I guess I can ask for it later. And I don't want to use up my three minutes with that, so my concern with a conditional use permit, as you know, I've had lots of concerns with them. And on code, Quiktech County Code nineteen point six zero point zero nine zero. A conditional use permit notice of time and place of hearing. It states upon the filing of an application for a conditional use permit or a variance, the Board of Adjustment shall set the time. And place for a public hearing in such manner and a written notice there shall be, or there shall be mailed to the property owners. In a radius of three hundred feet, the written notice shall be mailed no less than fourteen days prior to the hearing. Also, in the Quiktech County's cup application, the verbiage states, the characteristics of a proposed additional use. Shall be reviewed during the application and the public hearing process to determine whether or not the development is appropriate and compatible. In the particular location proposed and what if any conditions are necessary to ensure compatibility. And then the variance application, it says the Board of Adjustment meets the first Monday of each month. And it goes on to say how the deadlines for submissions for the application for the Board of Adjustment. So everything I read in county code, county cup application, other applications. It states that the county is going to put conditional use permits in front of the Board of Adjustment. As well as have a public hearing that couples with that. Am I correct? That is the county procedure that when a cup application comes in, it goes to the Board of Adjustment and has a public hearing?
Yes, unless modified by a different, you, you, I'm not going to be trapped into saying something. There's your, your question generally speaking is yes. Unless it goes before a hearings examiner, as is outlined in other county code.
Okay, so then that would mean that the cups for the Night Road solar projects could just be forwarded on to a hearings examiner. Without public hearing for the citizens, because I'm correcting, and then correct me if I'm wrong, Under Canvas never had a public hearing. For the citizens, so our voices were not be able to be, they weren't heard there, so.
Just a public hearing at the hearings examiner for the Under Canvas project.
That was the Friday meeting.
And there was two people that testified on that.
There, there were over forty people that.
That was not for the CUP, that was for the CP.
There were over forty citizens watched the video that testified in opposition of the conditional use permit at that public hearing. So I'm, I'm concerned that the Night Road solar projects will have the same fate. You will forward them on to a hearings examiner and it will never see the light of day of the Board of Adjustment. Nor will it go in front of the public for a hearing to have you hear the voices.
Your, your time has elapsed, I did give you some extra because of the interactions that are going on, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I'm back in the room because we did have somebody join us, so we are in open, uh, public comment. If there's anybody in the room that wishes to comment, this is your opportunity.
I'm just gonna see it later, I'm dawn.
I know you're dawn. But I thought you might. That's okay, so I'll go back to the. Zero zero eight eight, you unmuted, do you wish to make a public comment?
Yes, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Delmar Eldred, Golden Dale, Washington, and you know, it's getting really frustrating. With all the concerns that are coming forward with especially these two projects. This solar and under canvas and you know, it's time to start lifting the clouds. You guys are going to have to put out and get, prepare yourself for a town hall meeting to come up with the answers. And the reasons why you think that this is going to benefit the county or that the quality of life is going to be any better with these two. Projects going under, I mean, if you look at just alone, the battery storage facilities that are. I mean, that one in Australia that went off last week, seventeen hours. That facility was in operation, seventy two hours to put out one battery fire. I mean, these concerns are real and then you look at just one, I mean, that's just one aspect of safety. And environmental concerns on C's and then you look at under canvas. If you want to see mayhem on a one lane road and a, and a, during a wildfire. Go to Paradise, California, the video, them people trying to get out on a one lane road, emergency vehicles trying to get in. I mean, that was almost a disaster, you know, and you guys ignore all the information. That the people are providing for you and they want, they're concerned and they want answers and it's time for you guys to. Fess up and have a meeting and address why you think that your decision is better than what the citizens. Are trying to put forth and you know, this whole thing that. You guys think that the citizens are your enemies, they're concerned, they're concerned about the future and the quality of the county. Which don't appear that the county commissioners could care less about, you know, so that's all I have to say.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment, I got nobody else in the room, so I will continue on the. Virtual Zoom or phone, please unmute yourself and get our attention. You wish to make public comment?
Oh my gosh, there he is.
Okay, we are still, so if you change your mind, this is your opportunity. Unmute yourself. It's zero zero eight eight? Okay, you're, you're still unmuted. So if you want to mute yourself. Although I'm seeing unmuted people.
I guess I can respond to Mr. Eldred since we don't have anybody else. Mr. Eldred, I've never said that the citizens are, are enemies. I don't know where you're getting that from or what leads you to that understanding. Furthermore, when it comes to a CUP, it will not be the commissioners that are going to end up making that decision. So having the town hall to talk about that doesn't make a lot of sense. There's processes that's enshrined in statute that are in place that you will have to go through. Or any applicant for a conditional use permit has to go through and that is the process. It is not appropriate to try to front run a process by stating. How we feel about it, how we feel doesn't really matter. Because everybody has rights, just as you have the right to comment, to oppose, to appeal. Other people have the right to. Put forth a project, whether it's to build a house, whether it's to build a solar farm, whether it's to. Build a glamping community, a gun range, a wedding venue, all these things, people have rights to come forward and try to do it. What they would like to do with their property and then it goes through the process.
And then it goes through the process in which mitigations, sometimes it's outright denial, but this is how the process works. And many of these things that you brought up, that you have questions on, whether it be battery, storage, safety, environmental, those are all the same questions that I have. Those are all the reasons that you have an EIS process so that you can find the answers to those questions. And that is why that process is also enshrined in RCW and state law. I'm looking to see what else is open up here. That concludes that one.
Oh, seven nine six.
We are still in public comment, you know, oh, seven nine six, did you wish to make a comment?
Um, yes. Good afternoon, County Commissioners. This is Lisa Evans of White Salmon. Um, I just wanted to let you know that a, a group called For the Kids Washington has, um, organized a statewide rally for tomorrow. So if you see a lot of parents around the county tomorrow holding up signs, um, I can't speak for all of them, but I know for myself, uh, a lot of it is just to rally against, uh, the governor's mandate that all kids must be masked and that they are pulling both state and federal money from the school districts that do not comply. So I just wanted you to be aware that if you're driving around tomorrow, I know that a minimum of six of our school districts have, um, or, or people from those school districts, um, have responded to For the Kids Washington and will be standing outside at various times tomorrow throughout our county, uh, just asking for support as parents to have the, uh, freedom to make the medical choices for their children, uh, to have masks optional, to have the governor back off from controlling our school districts via the use of funds, um, which I'm not sure he can do legally anyways because of McCleary. But anyway, so I just wanted to give you a, make you aware that if you see parents around tomorrow that, holding up signs that that is their purpose, is to just, um, make their statement to, for their children and for their medical freedom. Thanks.
For clarification, uh, Ms. Evans, was it the governor that made that requirement? Or was it the superintendent of public instruction?
Well, essentially both. So via, via the superintendent of public instruction's email, it was stated that the governor, um, had required them or required the OSPI, I, I believe, to withhold all state and local funding. You know, ultimately, the, the buck stops with the governor. But in the email, it was clear the funds would be withheld.
Lisa, I was listening to, this is Commissioner Christopher, I was listening to the state superintendent's speech this morning. And he said that this was essentially his idea that he's gotta run it past the governor, but he doesn't think there'll be any problems getting it past the governor. So it sounds like he's taking at least credit for developing this whole shenanigans. Just filling you in, little info there.
Okay, right. Yeah, well, no, I really appreciate it because obviously every day things change, right? Like what's true right now won't be true five minutes from now. But yeah, you know, a lot of parents are frustrated that their voices aren't being heard at the state level. And so I just wanted you to be aware that tomorrow, that's essentially the impetus behind the rally. And, um, you know, for more information, the group is called For the Kids Washington, um, that, that has organized this rally.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are still, we are still in citizen comment for two more minutes. If there is someone that wishes to comment to the board online, please get our attention. Unmute star six if you're on a phone.
Erin is still there.
Yeah. Yeah. Director Quinn, did you have a, a brief, um, thing you wish to update the board on?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up just because, you know, um, I briefed you last week just to let you know that we're seeing a significant increase in case counts. We are continuing to see that again this week. We have had a hundred and twenty-six cases in the last fourteen days. With just a few more cases, likely we will have more cases this month than any month besides December since the beginning of the pandemic in this, uh, county. That's concerning to me for multiple reasons. We have fair this week, uh, which is, you know, that brings a lot of people from a lot of different areas in addition to fairs in areas across the state and, um, in neighboring counties as well. So just kind of concerned about the potential impacts of having people gather on kind of what our case counts are, specifically because schools starting in the next two weeks across the county and just really wanting to make sure that, you know, we do still support that children are gonna be able to be in school and be safe, um, in person for as much of this school year as possible. We're still not making very good headway on vaccines. Only thirty-nine point five percent of our total population is fully vaccinated. So, you know, sixty-some percent of this county, a little over sixty percent is, is vulnerable to COVID right now. We're continuing to see it spread fast. Uh, we're seeing it spread easily. It just, there's a lot of concerns. We have three people, I just looked real quick, in, they're in, um, hospitals, not locally. They've been transferred from what I understood, uh, but very young. So we're looking at someone in their thirties, someone in their forties. These are ages we have not been seen in the hospital before the last couple of weeks. So, um, it's hitting people that are younger, it's hitting them harder. I say across the board, though, our cases have been arranged. We've had, uh, an individual that was under one. Uh, we've had individuals over ninety, so we still are seeing a really big range in this county, but definitely seeing younger people being affected locally more heavily. So, um, you know, just again, recommending masks indoors when people are able to do that for people that are struggling with wearing masks, try to get vaccinated. If you can't get vaccinated, wear a mask. Um, just anything you could do to just kind of help support getting through this fall so that we can keep all of the kids in local schools in school in person. Um, and pending your question, oh, I did have one more thing, I'm sorry. There was a lot of confusion this week with the new recommendations for the vaccine. So the recommendation was for a third dose of vaccine for those individuals who are immunocompromised. And we're talking about people who are actively on cancer treatments, people who have HIV, people who had stem cell transplants. This isn't for, this isn't the booster dose that the rest of us will get. There, they may make recommendations for that later this week or next week. Um, the recommendation will likely, we believe that it will be that anyone should get a booster dose eight to nine months after their last dose. For most people in that camp, this county, those booster doses would start probably in November, December, because that's the bulk of the doses that we started really pushing here. So we've been giving doses since December, but not a lot were given until we had adequate supplies around the March timeframe. So really gonna start seeing for most people in this county that will need a booster dose, that it will be starting around December. So just hopefully that clarifies things for people. Otherwise, pending your questions, that's all I have.
Questions for the Health Director before we go. Okay, thanks, Erin.
Yep, thank you.
With that, um, we will move on now to, um, it's time we set aside for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Our first, um, public hearing is to consider the establishment of these maximum speed limits in accordance with statutory provisions of RCW forty-six point six one point four one five. These will be covering, um, Lake Road, Wind Road and Oak Ridge Road from various mileposts that we will get into when we get into the specifics.
Wind Road or Wing Road?
Wing Road. Yeah, sorry, I knew that. It says Wind. Apparently I can, I can read.
You can read correctly.
I can read correctly. We, we have no Wind Road that I'm aware of. So, so Director Kelsey.
All right, um, I have an engineer's report prepared. And, uh, so typically, speed limit changes are initiated by the public. So someone will call us and request we reevaluate a speed limit on any given road. And we go out and we set counters and we collect data for counts, speeds and traffic composition, whether it's trucks, cars, motorcycles, all those things. And then we prepare a report of those findings, which we have. So basically, what we look at is, uh, speed limits. When we collect the data, we look at a speed limit that's close to that, what, eighty-five percent of the traffic are traveling at or below? And then it's set at the nearest five mile an hour increment to that data point. But, um, there's this thing called the ten mile an hour pace speed, which is the data will look like a bell curve. And somewhere in there, that, within a ten mile an hour band, most of the cars are traveling. And so you never want to set it outside of that because then you get this differential with people going either too fast or too slow based on that band when you look at setting a speed limit. So other factors we take into consideration are the characteristics of a roadway, how curvy is it? Hilly, you know, can you, you have good sight distance, um, are there lots of pedestrians or bicyclists? All those things we take a look at and crash history, what's going on in the road? And, and, uh, those allow us some flexibility within that ten mile an hour pace in the eighty-fifth percentile. So a snapshot of the data collected on Lake Road, uh, shows that eighty-five percent of the vehicles travel at a speed of around twenty-three point two miles per hour. So it suggests a speed limit of twenty-five mile an hour based on the data. And that one's pretty straightforward. Um, and there's a lot of pedestrian and residential, activities as well as recreational things going on on that road. So, um, the roadway use and characteristics support a reduction from the thirty-five to the twenty-five mile an hour. On Wing Road, a snapshot of data collected, uh, shows that eighty-five percent of the vehicles are traveling around forty-seven miles per hour. So other factors we consider, there are school bus stops out there. There are people that walk that road. And, uh, so let's see, we have one recorded accident in that segment, but it's not related. I think Sess said it was alcohol-related, so doesn't really have to do with the characteristics of the road. So taking all this into consideration, um, other things occurred in that segment of road, a forty mile per hour speed limit, um, is appropriate for that segment. The last one is Oak Ridge Road. Um, so we looked at the eighty-fifth percentile. It's about forty-one miles per hour from Echo Glen to Beezy Glenwood Highway. Uh, we did hear a lot recently that, uh, there are a lot of pedestrians and bicyclists and other users outside of the vehicles that use that road. There were no recorded accidents in the past five years. Limiting, uh, road characteristics include horizontal curves in the area. But the zoning is pretty much rural residential, um, in characteristic. So looking at all of that, um, thirty-five mile based on that is probably the appropriate speed limit and, uh, is not above the ten mile an hour pace or below. The other thing that, uh, this road was reconstructed back in the late nineties with a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. And what we do when we redesign and rebuild a road, we come back and ordinance the road to the speed limit of the design. That was never done in this case. So it remained an unposted fifty, was signed appropriately, the curves were. But it was never ordinance properly as it should have been. So that is really probably one of the biggest reasons to actually go back and ordinance this road with a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. So that, that concludes my staff report.
I will now open the public meeting to take public testimony both for and against, uh, the proposed speed limit changes. Is there anybody, okay, I'm gonna go, Pat, go ahead.
Hi, Pat Arnold, four seven two Sunnyside Road, Trout Lake. Appreciate the work the road department has done on this. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Trout Lake Community Council in support of the proposed speed limit revision on Lake Road in Trout Lake. The council has heard from Trout Lake residents, including some Lake Road residents, that there are concerns about safety and dust with the present speed limit. We appreciate that the DNR maintains access to Trout Lake and to the trail there. Local residents use the trail for exercise, bird watching and education. Some residents, including children, bicycle down Lake Road to get to the Trout Lake Natural Area Preserve. Even though drivers are often exceeding the current speed limit and will no doubt ignore any speed limit, we feel that the reduction will help make drivers aware of the need for safety to drive more slowly. Any reduction in speed will of course help with a dust problem. So thank you for moving forward on this change and for the opportunity to testify.
You. I'll now look in the room. Is there anybody that wishes to testify on these? Not, I'll go back to Zoom. Is there anybody else that wishes to provide public testimony on the proposed speed limit changes? Raise your hand, unmute. I don't see anybody. Okay, uh, Sherry Bosque, go ahead, please.
Um, yes, I, I am, um, addressing the Oak Ridge Road proposal of the speed limit change. And I had a few questions. Um, well, I heard that there was no accident data and that, um, I was wondering if there was any new AD, ADT data? And also was this speed reduction a request from the local road users? And I was wondering if, um, that could be answered, if the, if the reduction, speed reduction was from a, a local road user.
No, in this case it was not. When we looked into the road, we noticed that this segment had not been ordinance the way it should have. And so we are, that is from our department to correct this error. And the data that we have is from July twentieth of this year. So we just twentieth through the twenty-second. So yes, we have new, new data to support, the eighty-fifth percentile and the speed limit change.
All right, okay, thank you for answering that. And so I guess as my testimony, recently I was listening to the Under Canvas CIPA appeal and the conditional use permit hearing where Oak Ridge Road was discussed at length. With, with, uh, I guess because of Under Canvas, they had a road study and then Public Works also said they did a road study on Oak Ridge Road. And it was found that, you know, nobody really looked at the pedestrians and the other recreational use. Nobody really looked at a lot of the conditions of the, of the road use. And now I'm hearing that the reduction is because of, you know, a half, you know, pedestrians and things like that. So as the county puts that information out there that this road has pedestrians, has recreation, has other uses, and they need to, they're suggesting reducing the speed, that I would hope the county would also in consideration of increasing the traffic on Oak Ridge by eighteen times with additional under canvas traffic. And also my testimony is that I am concerned as a citizen, after hearing the Under Canvas hearings, um, that Under Canvas has proposed with the county to have taxpayers upgrade Oak Ridge Road at our expense, perhaps maybe sharing it. And also the reduction has me concerned that this reduction in speed is to benefit Under Canvas in a way. So that is my, uh, testimony that I'm very concerned as a citizen that this reduction is to benefit the Under Canvas project. And I, and I, I don't believe that that should be a reason to reduce the speed. And if you don't have any accidents on that road, then I don't know any other reason it would be done but to benefit a project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other folks that wish to comment on the proposed reduction of the speeds on these, any of these three roads? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. Any questions for, uh, staff or anybody else from the board? Yes, go ahead.
Um, I don't have a problem with any of these three and I, I fully understand. If Oak Ridge Road was only built to withstand speeds of vehicles going thirty-five miles an hour, it's only smart and safe to maintain that speed limit. I don't believe that would have anything to do with Under Canvas. Has to do with the way the road was built and engineered from the get-go in a mistake that was made in not posting speed limit signs a decade ago. in a mistake that was made in not posting speed limit sites a decade ago. So that's what the Oak Ridge Road speed limit change is to me has nothing to do with under canvas.
What is the rest of Oak Ridge Road? Because this is the paved portion.
Yeah, the southern piece is that we built, I don't know, it's been eight, ten years ago. It was, we designed that for twenty-five and it's posted at twenty-five, it's much more curvy than this segment. And so it would would have been big impact to the neighborhood. And then the piece from Rattlesnake down to the state highway is thirty-five, yeah.
What about the gravel section?
Um, I don't know, do you? That's the twenty-five too, it just continues on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's because it's really same characteristic as the piece we rebuilt.
Yeah.
Ten years ago, eight, ten years ago.
Okay. Any other question?
So we do do continued rebuilding of our county roads, including Oak Ridge Road, yes, we need it, yes.
Okay, if there are no more any other public comments, I will now close the public hearing to further public testimony discussion by the board. Totally optional. Comments if not. Okay, I will, I already did that, first for the public testimony twice, it's really closed now. I would say just for myself as far as discussion, I think it's important to note that there is a we, when we look at changing speed limits, we have a prescriptive, we have a process that we go through that we, this is not based on somebody complained or didn't complain. That may originally start a discussion, quite often it does. In fact, I get those myself that I refer them on to Public Works. We do a speed study based on the data and and using that we come up with these speed recommendations are based on data collection and other factors, not other things as might have been alluded to. So I have no problem supporting the the recommendations that Public Works came up with. If there's nothing else from my seatmates, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the establishment of the maximum speed limits in accordance with statutory provisions for Lake Road, Wing Road and Oak Ridge Road as presented by staff.
I will second motion. Okay, I have a motion in a second to adopt the staff recommendation for the reductions of those segments of the road as is in the staff report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passed, thank you.
Thank you.
We do that. Next, we have a public meeting to consider approval of short flat SPL twenty twenty dash fourteen.
Your planner is online.
He is online, okay, this is in the, and I, I should be nice to read all the parcel numbers, but I'm not going to. This is in High Prairie vicinity, the applicants that are Robin and Jody Raines. And we will start with a brief staff report, I believe Denise is online. So Denise, if you want to unmute yourself, I'm looking for you.
She's got it. Okay, can you?
There we go.
Sorry about that. Okay, so you can hear me, right?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, short flat twenty twenty dash fourteen is a proposal to create two lots from parcel zero three, one, three, two, eight, zero, 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 two, zero, zero. The short plats located in the High Prairie vicinity. The administrative review of the short flat has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road health, planning and treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it is in the public's interest to approve the short plat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL twenty twenty dash fourteen applicants, Robin and Jody Raines.
Thank you, any questions? If not, I'm I'm open.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the short flat number SPL twenty twenty dash fourteen for parcel number zero three dash one, three dash two, eight, zero, zero, dash zero, 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 two, backslash, zero, zero in section twenty-eight, applicant Robin and Julie Raines.
I will second the motion. Yeah, I have a motion in a second to approve short flat twenty twenty dash fourteen, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I, you did. I appreciate that.
We would have heard Jake does that on the next.
That will bring us now to another public meeting to consider approval of short flat SPL twenty twenty dash twenty-one. This is in the Golden Dale vicinity, Judith, applicants Judith Laxstrom and Carl and Karen Conroy. And we will start with a brief staff review, Denise, please.
Okay, SPL twenty twenty twenty-one is a proposal to create four lots from parcel zero five, one, five, two, five, zero, 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 nine, zero, zero within the Golden Dale vicinity. The admin review of the short flat has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road health and planning departments and treasurer's office. All conditions of preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve the short plat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL twenty twenty dash twenty-one applicants, Judith Laxstrom and Carl and Karen Conroy. This is off of Pine Forest Road.
Any question? Please. Yes.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve short flat SPL twenty twenty dash twenty-one, parcel number zero five dash fifteen dash twenty-five hundred dash zero, 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 nine, four slash zero, zero in section twenty-five and thirty, township, North Range, fifteen, east, the Golden Dale vicinity. Applicants Judith Laxstrom and Carl and Karen Conroy.
In a second, I have a motion in a second to approve short flat twenty twenty dash twenty-one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. I know. Okay, and now finally, we have a public meeting to consider approval of boundary line adjustment, BLA twenty twenty-one dash oh, three. This is in the Lisle vicinity, the applicant is Claire Higgins. Now we'll start with yet another brief staff report.
Okay, BLA twenty twenty-one oh, three is a proposal to adjust the common property line between lots twenty and twenty-one of the Bridlewood Meadows subdivision off of Meadows Loop in the Lisle vicinity. The admin review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road health, planning and treasurer's office. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA twenty twenty-one dash zero, three applicant Claire Higgins.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No.
Okay, I entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve boundary line adjustment, BLA twenty twenty-one dash zero, three, parcel numbers zero three dash one, two, dash, zero, three, five, three, dash, zero, zero, two, zero, four slash zero, zero and zero, three, dash, one, two, dash, zero, three, five, three, dash, zero, zero, two, one, four slash zero, zero. Three township, three, north range twelve, east in the Lisle vicinity with the applicant Claire Higgins.
Second motion. Okay, I have a motion in a second to grant final approval on boundary line adjustment. BLA twenty twenty-one dash zero, three, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise, well, I don't know, Denise, is anybody else doing any work over there?
Are you kidding me?
Well, it's been your show today, which I know this is your, this is your area that you and I know this is your, these are your brains. Because I'm, other folks listening now, they're upset now, so I know they're working. Yeah.
You guys have a good day.
You too. I'd saw it, I'd read it. You're not supposed to be reading it either. Just because you're supposed to have your mind right here, right now. He assigned where legal.
There's two pages of documents that I did.
Okay.
The debris going inside.
Us old timers can't do that. Hi, Rex, Miss Donna, I see you brought. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Is that the granddaughter?
Yeah.
The infamous granddaughter. I just say, her granddaughter.
She's hiding. Running a little bit ahead. I hear some, yeah. Motion going on out there.
I saw Jim over in Detroit a minute ago.
Kind of good title transfer, so we can.
One to one thirty, and I believe there is going to be no other public comment. I'm not granting any special. No, I will.
I saw this email earlier. Maybe all, kind of makes some sense out of that.
I love you, I saw you coming back. Which I guess they're not. I know. It seems like.
I don't think I've seen any of you in so much, it's been so long.
Lucky you.
I know, right? I have more wrinkles.
I'm just older, grayer, fatter, so.
Actually, no, I think the last time I was out here, I was trying to experiment, I shaved my head. Didn't go well. Yeah.
It worked well for me, but you got there.
Um, if you want to call it that. I call it hope. That's about all.
I lost mine, I'll be a little patch right here. And it was like, no, it's time.
Time to.
Yeah, back to work, okay, our next order of business is mostly miscellaneous reports and comments. Republic Services Area Director of Operations, Don Tibbetts Quarterly Update and Presentation, which I'm waiting for the two former commissioners Rex Johnson and Jim Seinfeld. So welcome Republic folks.
Thank you, my class case is not the presentation.
Oh, I was like. Always watches other hand.
Yeah, right. Great to see everybody again and nice to be able to do these in person. Before we get going on the on the report, I'd like to introduce Josh Shaw. Josh is our new general manager for Roosevelt and Washington Post Collection Waste by Rail Network. Josh has, how long have you been with the company?
Been with the company five years, started my career in Dallas, Fort Worth area, well, sort of my Republic career in Dallas, Fort Worth area. And they moved up here last year as the area post collections manager. Don Hal from Don Tibbetts at the area office at Redman. Been in the role now, it's my fourth week, so.
And how about?
And you're still here, so.
The day's not over.
Yeah, it's early in.
Yeah. How about you give them up speed on like your your overall like waste experience?
Absolutely, yeah, so graduated college in two thousand eight, probably the worst time to graduate college, you know, with the market crash and everything. So ended up in the waste business on accident, working for Waste Connections in in New Mexico.
That's unfortunate.
It's good experience, move on. You know,
yeah.
thirteen years in the industry, eight with Waste Connections, five with Republic. Mostly all on the post collections side, transfer stations, landfills, recycling centers. But I did have a two-year stint in Austin, Texas, where I was the operations manager over a hauling company, so about forty-five trucks. It's in the blood, I love it, this is, this is what I'll be doing, you know, as far as I can see. So, you know, it's a pleasure to meet you guys and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Okay, I think that's good. The first thing I would tell you is don't believe half of what he told you. And even less than what he told you. They're really nice.
Um, okay, well, why don't we dive into the report real quick?
Now for serious.
So this is gonna be volume through May. June actually was a very good month as well, once we have end July. But I just want to kind of focus on the first part of the year. So as you can see, from twenty-one verse twenty, we're up about thirty-two thousand tons year over year, which is approximately eighteen and a half percent. Obviously, twenty twenty, not a stellar year as far as volume. I think we all understand why, so I tried to base everything really on twenty nineteen volumes, that's a much better baseline. So when we look at twenty nineteen, we are trending to and slightly favorable to twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen was two hundred or two point four six million tons, and I think we're gonna hit right at two point five million. If that is the case, that will be another record year for Roosevelt, so we're excited about that. You can see the individual customers that are really attributing the main one or contributing, excuse me, is Snohomish County. When we look at twenty nineteen volume compared to twenty-one volume, it's up about twelve percent. That's primarily due to some flow control efforts that Snohomish County has put into place regarding some CND recyclers in that county. We are seeing, starting to see a little bit of tonnage leak out of that system, we believe it's going to Yakima. There's a CND landfill over there that they might be putting some volume in there that they're not permitted for. So we're trying to get our arms wrapped around that and make sure the proper regulators are up to speed on that. Because it's an online CND landfill, but we think there's some MSW sneaking in there. But we don't really see that being a huge, huge issue. You'll notice Spokane MSW is up. That's in addition to the ash, that's just because they are continuing to push that system as far as the incinerator. It's completely maxed out, so they're having to do more and more, what we call bypass, which is just shipping us standard MSW pre-incineration, which we're good with. In fact, we're in discussions with Spokane right now to see how we can further service them possibly through an extension of contract or something in those lines. But as more information comes available, we'll keep you guys up to speed on that. So that's obviously one of our key partners that we want to make sure we maintain. Thurston County, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely up. When we look at twenty twenty versus twenty nineteen, we anticipate the trend will actually finish probably ten to twelve percent favorable when compared to twenty nineteen. Obviously, I believe everybody is aware that we were the successful company on the RFP that was put out, which is great, we're in current contract negotiations with them, they're going very well. We don't see any issues whatsoever with finalizing those and getting that wrapped up rather quickly. Steve Gilmore is leading that that negotiation, he's doing a great job and he was in the room, so I don't want to say too much about him. Our Canadian volume is finally starting to pick back up. So Canada really, really locked down during COVID, specifically British Columbia. We're now starting to see that that volume turn on again. Metro Vancouver has reached out to us two months in a row now requesting to ship us the Requesting to ship us additional volume than what they have previously. So I believe in August, they're going to be shipping roughly. I'm gonna say six thousand metric tons, so let's just call it sixty-six hundred to seven thousand short tons. And they are likely going to be going out to RFP later this year or early next year. We believe that's going to be for a sizable volume. Now they're keeping it right close to their chest right now, however, I'm gonna be very surprised if it's anything less than a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand tons. I think it could be very far north of that. So previously, when they went out to RFP, they awarded the contingency disposal contract to ourselves and Waste Management, they split that volume. Waste Management was not able to provide them with the amount of service that they actually needed, so they terminated that contract with Waste Management last year, and they've only been using us. Now unfortunately, COVID hit, and so we didn't really get to see the full benefit of that. However, it puts us in a very good position when this new RFP comes out. Now things have changed in that market considerably because Bell Corp has opened up another landfill at Cache Creek. This is a very, very old topic, I know Dave's up to speed on it, and I don't wanna spend a lot of time in this forum getting everybody up to speed on. On really like the history of Cache Creek and Bell Corp and West Waste Tech. However, it's a competing landfill, it's a, it's going to be challenging to compete against them. Very aggressively, because they can take it over the road, it's about a two and a half, three hour drive to Cache Creek, it's just north of Kamloops. Which probably nobody knows where that's at. Couple hours north of Abbotsford. So if they decide to get very aggressive, it's gonna be tough, but. We are hopeful that Metro recalls the relationship they had with Bell Corp, which it did not end well, and. Gonna do everything we can there to make sure we get that volume again, once we actually know what that volume is going to be, then we'll meet with L U and get you up to speed on it, so. So, like I said, I think later this year, maybe early next year. So our lobbyist in the B C market right now is getting as much information as she can. Like I said, they're keeping it pretty close to their chest, but she believes. Given everything that's still going on up there, probably Q one before it really happens.
How long is the contingency?
So. Yeah, so that actually, they have one more extension that they can utilize. Obviously, we've been trying to. Yes, convince them to continue doing that.
But only.
As well as going out with a longer, much more sizable RFP. I really wanted them to go out to RFP prior to Cache Creek real bad, but obviously they're not as dumb as I had hoped. But anyway, very, very promising there. A couple new markets that we're starting to explore that will be of interest to. I know, I'm gonna get some looks from individuals in the room, but we are starting to explore Hawaii again. Yeah, I know. Yeah.
I heard rumor of that.
Yeah, it actually, it's a very sizable opportunity, it's exciting. You know, when we attempted to do that in two thousand ten, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, it was an absolute nightmare. But that was due to an individual that doesn't work for us, and didn't work for us at the time, but. A lot of history there, if you're ever up late at night and you wanna Google Hawaii Waste Systems in Ravanco, feel free to do that. You'll learn some stuff there, however, since we already containerize and barge waste down from Alaska, it would be a very similar situation. We would land the barge as in Seattle, put it on the train, so that's different than two thousand nine, two thousand ten, where they're gonna try to. For a lot of reasons, I have zero interest in trying to bring those open water barges up to Columbia. The pushback would be significant from several groups, so landing them in Seattle and just adding to our train schedule is gonna be ideal. Still in the infancy stages, but I would say over the course of the next year, it's a market we're gonna be very pushing very hard to develop.
Is Seattle the only port that it's available for something like that?
No, we could certainly go into Tacoma. We could go into, I try to keep everything out of Portland, longshoreman issues.
Right.
But we could go into California ports, but our rail rates from the California ports are not very attractive.
But nothing in Catlana or Longview or.
We do have a rail rate from Longview, so that is something that we could explore. The Burlington Northern typically is hesitant to service out of Longview because Longview is a shared yard. Between Union Pacific and Burlington Northern, they actually just take years or take turns operating it one year. Next year, the U P operates it.
It's efficient.
Yeah, that's, yeah, if you've ever worked with the railroads, it's. And that's what the railroads are basically. So anyway, we could do Longview, but I, I don't think it'd be very ideal. Seattle's the best one, and the other reason is. So we would be working with Alaska Marine Lines, so Alaska Marine Lines purchased North Shore tug and barge in twenty sixteen. And so they currently already serve the islands. One of the reasons this opportunity is very appealing is because. It makes sense if you think about it, like we ship a lot of things out to the islands, but not a whole lot comes back. So all these shipping containers coming back are empty, and so if we can actually start utilizing those shipping containers by using a bladder system. So then the bladder would tip out with the waste, and then shipping containers could be reused. They wouldn't have to deadhead, and so any revenue that they can get on a return ship or return yak float is very beneficial for them. So, that was exciting. So, the one thing I'd kind of.
What kind of volumes?
Yeah, so Steve, can you remind me of what the Hawaii?
Yeah, so we're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand tons from two of the counties there between Kauai and. Maui, yeah. So they have landfills that are gonna be closing within the next seven years. So they're either having to build new sites or find a solution to either ship it or find it. And there are currently some regulations that prohibit shipping from within the islands, so waste cannot be shipped, shipped from one island. So they would have to go through some pretty dramatic changes within how their current system works to, to find solutions on another.
Do any of the islands ship to the mainland currently?
Yeah, yeah, they all, each island has their own solid waste system, but to Steve's point, a lot of them are starting to near. They're almost full, yeah. And, you know, everything on the islands are very expensive. Construction of a landfill is extremely expensive, but there's a massive leachate issue, so. Yeah, exactly.
You're gonna truck it somewhere.
Exactly, that's, that's where I really think that it's a significant opportunity, of course. I'm assuming that you're either starting or in your budget process already.
Just starting.
Okay.
There it is, shown in the book.
All right, fantastic. Okay, so looking at my crystal ball, like I said, I think we're gonna finish this year about two point five million tons. Fingers crossed, this new strain variant, whatever, doesn't play havoc with the economy. I would see the volume in twenty twenty-two probably growing by about ten percent. So, you know, we're talking two point five to two point seven five as far as tons. Locking up Thurston.
I was just waiting as I heard Jen all up her. The finance director.
Yeah, as, and of course, you know, I said that the caveat of, of this new variant, as long as the economy doesn't get locked down or shut down again. And the majority of that volume that I'm talking about, it, I believe, will be coming from Canada for the growth, which is great, so. We are moving forward with developing our new rail yard in Sumas. So we're in the process of finalizing the purchase and sale agreement. That will allow us to generate unit trains out of Sumas, which is right next to Abbotsford. And so that will allow us to increase our tonnage from that yard from about two hundred and eighty-five thousand, it's called three hundred thousand tons. To about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand tons, just for that yard alone.
So clarification, you're thinking next year might be at ten percent, but that's not through existing contracts, that would be.
That, that's actually through organic growth that existed.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, right now, we were a bit of a bottleneck in the Canadian market. There's more demand than what we can supply because of the way our rail system works up in that part of the country. So by building this new air modal, it allows us to kind of like unkink the hose. And we'll be able to send unit trains, so then we can actually start taking more volume, because right now. Especially with the private transfer stations up there, we are turning customers away every day.
Wow.
Yeah, which is not a place I like to be.
Does there continue to be challenges with the exchange rate as far as?
Not to the extent that it was in two thousand fourteen. Especially right now with oil prices being, you know, fairly high, the Canadian economy basically is. It mirrors oil prices, so the Canadian dollar is strong when oil prices are good, and it gets very weak, that's what happened in two thousand fourteen. You know, when oil prices tanked to thirty, forty dollars from a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty-five. It used to be a one to one ratio roughly, the US compared to Canadian dollar, and. Now it is currently, I haven't checked for a couple weeks, but I'm guessing it's probably about. Eighty-five to one. In two thousand fourteen, we were really struggling with that because it was closer to like sixty-nine, seventy to one. That's where we really had to get very creative in order to try that volume. Being creative, meaning.
Creative.
Yeah.
Reading my book.
Yeah, there you go. Um, yeah, so, you know, I, I think we, again, we're gonna have a really good twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we see strong growth. Do you have some current concerns on the landfill right now? I don't know what the. The infection rates are doing in Cooketown County as a whole, but we are experiencing a spike, so.
Yeah.
Josh and I, we're talking about it on the way out here, what we're going to do to move some, some volume, because he's getting a pretty big backlog now.
Just from, from staff, I mean, just lack of staff.
Yeah, he's, he's down over eleven drivers right now. So, yeah, so that hurts big time. You know, this time of year, we should be doing ninety-five hundred, ten thousand tons per day. Yesterday, fifty-three hundred. So, the waste is there, it's not like it's escaping, it's just now it's just piled up in the air.
Twenty-six positives in the last fourteen days, you have eleven of them.
Yeah. All right, yeah, you have eleven drivers right? Yeah, so we also have individuals, there's other employees at the intermodal, the landfill, but those are just drivers and eleven, so. Yeah, we are gonna be moving forward with the mask policy again at Roosevelt to try to get it under control, some other, you know, social distancing. Efforts, everything we can, obviously, we're encouraging everybody to get vaccinated, we're not requiring it, but we're strongly encouraging. Aside from that. Yeah. Questions, concerns?
Good presentation, covered everything.
Thanks. The next one, I will probably let Josh do on his own, he's a big boy, so he can rattle off the numbers just as well as I can. Not that I don't enjoy coming out and seeing all of you, it is always a pleasure. Um, now we do have a presentation that I believe Steve is going to run. So obviously with, with. Rick, excuse me, with Rex and Jim retiring, we wanted to do something very nice, because obviously. Quite a partnership that we have for a number of years, public-private partnership, so we wanted to recognize that. We're going to have to step outside for the actual presentation, we'd like to give you some gifts that we're not allowed to bring into a courtroom. Yeah.
You mean I drove up all the way?
I have, there is a bar in Seattle that does plates. For a little taster, we have three of the different years or ages. I think it was like two hundred and fifty bucks. You just let me know, and I will be happy to buy one, it's lights, I will save it for two hundred and fifty dollars, I was.
So, actually, before we step outside then, if any other questions as far as landfill related. Volume, first, welcome to the, welcome to the family. We have a special relationship, I will say. I think it's worked really well for us as far as the public-private partnership over the last couple, three decades. I can only, I can only speak. From direct experience from the last fifteen years, but, you know, that's a decade and a half. It does work really well, and I, and I do look forward to, you know, interacting with you and getting to know each other, and. Anyway, we always understand, you know, we're, we're the host county. You know, it's not our landfill, it's not, we have to remind people of that. But we do, you know, you know, we understand our role, and we also understand there's sometimes things that we can do that maybe you can't do. And so that's, I just wanna make sure you understand that we're, if there's ways we can help, don't. Don't hesitate to reach out to us.
I would say the relationship has been the best since twenty thirteen, which is when I came on board.
It's, it's been strong through several administrations and. Previous.
Previous GMs and. As often as, as much as I want to get away from Roosevelt, I don't think I will ever be able to get away.
Yeah, it's, it's like you, you've announced, I mean, we've expected not to really see you.
I know.
And then you're always, you're like a bad, you just keep coming back.
I'm basically like a gold sword.
I think of it more of like the, you know, like Survivor where it's outlast, outwit. He's the last person. The landfill has spoken.
I'm, I'm waiting for it to speak.
All right.
I've, I've always, you know, really enjoyed working with, with Ford, and Josh is gonna do a great job, I have all the confidence in the world with him. And of course, I'm still around.
Right. Anything else before, because I think what I'm gonna do is recess for a few minutes, and we'll, we'll step outside. The, the main front steps? Or the front step, I guess. Where things are all tore apart right now. Have we looked if there is any steps out there? Those are brand new. All right, well, we are gonna recess then, I'm gonna stay for ten minutes. So folks, we'll, we'll be back. I think we've actually got. No, they were just.
Was that the land?
Yeah, that's good, yeah, landfill there, you know, we should budget for about ten percent. For twenty twenty-two, so very timely. So thank you commissioners for a few minutes this afternoon, thank you Lee for, Nippe for working us in the schedule. What we wanted to go through is, as you're aware, on your board calendars, Lee has blocked out. September ninth, sixteen, twenty-third, thirtieth, and then the fourth Thursdays in October and November fourth. So historically, looking back at least five years, the county has spent about nine hours. Receiving budget presentation spread over three or four half-days. So, since we know we're starting a little early this year, and we've blocked out significantly more time. We kind of wanted to go over our concept for what we're thinking for scheduling, to make sure we're on the same page as the commissioners. So just doubling the time that folks have had, so times in the past have been ten minutes, fifteen, twenty, thirty, and then public works with sixty or ninety. Depending on their fund, just doubling those and making some allowances for departments that we're giving to department updates. It becomes about twenty hours of presentations. Looking at. Starting a little later in the mornings, we've kind of, commissioner, starting at nine, getting over at four thirty. Having a lunch break and some breaks in the middle of the days to kind of slow the pace down. Have a little more casual conversation and not feel rushed. Take about five Thursdays to go through the first presentation of all departments, four and a half to five days. Um, and that would still leave all of October, that would leave, um, the fourteenth and twenty-first of October, twenty-eighth, and then fourth of November. For a second round or further discussions on additional revenues, additional expenses, follow-up discussions with departments. That followed questions to maybe their presentations. Commissioner Christopher is gone on the fourteenth of October. We didn't know. You still wanted to have a budget meeting that day or not?
That's what I was just playing with sticky notes for, um, because you have. Sorry, I will just back completely up. You have union negotiations scheduled for September fifteenth and there's a little block evidence deployment. There's, you have union negotiation scheduled for September twenty-second and there's a little block that's that Golden Dale Reds. Presentation that I really should be at, so I wanted to give you my times that I can have these Wednesdays kind of set off. Um, and then on that October date of the fourteenth. So Bill, I think, you know, that's. I took that because my wife took that, but it's budget, it's union negotiation, it's, I'll be here.
Yeah, you also have left that morning at night.
That's one more reason.
For those Wednesdays, Commissioner, we may be able to, for those days, move some of the negotiations.
That's why I was gonna give you all my dates now, so whenever you talk to them, you knew exactly.
Okay.
What my schedule was.
Okay, so I guess the first thing, let's start with, do we think? You know, as far as the time, which I, I support as far as the, you know, putting more time than we have traditionally done. You know, particularly this year, because I, I think it's pretty abbreviated in the past. There is not been really any time. For any interaction between the board and the, and the presenter for the most part, because there's just not any time. And we always think we're gonna come back to it and then we don't, and we generally end up making decisions. Without a whole lot of interaction with the departments. And so I, I think it's a good idea, the idea, I think, I think I'd support it. As far as the doubling the time, slow it down, there'll be lots of opportunity then for give and take, so I'll, I'll. Make the schedule work, whatever works for folks.
I agree. I've always, when I was at Mac there, I always thought it was kind of tight.
Yeah. Jake, are you okay with that?
I, I think it's gonna be the year we need to do it.
Yeah. And then Jen and I'll have a, an overlay calendar that we'll share with you for critical dates, you know, we'll overlay when tax levies have to be approved. Yeah, that would be good because we have, we've had it in the past where it's in our calendar, but I'm a real visual person. It really helps me if it's actually on. Where I can, a calendar, not, not text. This goes back to my picking directions from my wife and she wants to read me directions. And I want to see a map and that's. I wanna see, I wanna map, I wanna wanna, or something. Maybe it's, yeah, whatever works that we have, because a lot of times we don't realize that those dates are coming up and then we, we get up to them and they're like, oh, God, we've got it. The levy's gotta get in, we gotta get these things done, because you could take all those that are late, like, we have no choice over those things. And then back them up to when we think, oh, then we better be getting close to being done with this part of it by now, or we're not gonna make. And the, you know, noticing requirements, the things that we have to do as far as get the public hearings out, because we don't want to run into, oh, oops. Yeah, we did ask, I did ask Lee to date to add November fourth, because we didn't have that on their calendars. There is two in December. That we have in our calendar that we haven't blocked out on yours, you know, hopefully we don't have, we're not gonna be talking about the budget December ninth or sixteen even. Well, we have in the past and I don't want to. Listen, we're also gonna overlay if there's any, uh, new revenue that's to be considered, or there are certain dates that we'd have to have a resolution. You know, so we'll try and have all of those dates mapped out in advance so we don't, uh, miss an opportunity or miss a, a RCW requirement. Um, and then with the day starting a little later and ending at four thirty, I mean, if things go along, things go short, you'll have a lot of flexibility in the day. Anyway, but, um, and in the past, the departments were given, I think, every year for a long time, they could. Given them, put down their three options of dates and times. Um, we're not, I don't think we're gonna be able to accommodate that, trying to get all this in and get everybody plugged in. So we're probably gonna ask departments, one. To block all these dates out. Hopefully they've already done it if they've been listening. And then we'll get, we'll ask them what dates AM, PM, they are not available. So here's the dates. You know, at least the first five for the presentations and, you know, tell us when you can't be there and we'll work around that, but. I think the departments are gonna have to be a little more flexible around the commissioner's schedule this year than.
Well, and I think there's. It would be wise to have an order in how we accomplish things and maybe not start with the big guys.
Typically, public works and the sheriff's notorious end of, I kind of looked to see if there was some, some order and there is a little bit, but, uh, but, but. It, it can change and I think a lot of it was proven, for instance, the judges sometimes have court dates built in and they can't. You know, they can't be in the morning on a certain day or the afternoon. But once we get that back from then, the, the blackout period, so to speak, because of court dates or vacations or. And then I think we should be prepared realistically that, uh, COVID may impact some of this and departments may have to make presentations. Via Zoom or phone. I think it's better for in-person, but I think having that planned, whether you record it or not, I know is a discussion to be had or has been had. But, uh, having the option for Zoom or phone presentations if somebody's quarantined or ill. Or, uh, at that point in time, you know, there's a limit on the number of people in the building, which there's no word of coming from the governor yet, but. Just building in the possibilities, so we're not having to make adjustments at the last minute. Any issue with so many meetings or, uh, please have their. I don't see, can we do it now? I don't, I mean.
Never know, one of us might need to meet somewhere else at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, so it's nice to have the option. That's. You know, we had folks that did it last year.
Last year was call and it wasn't video, but. Yeah, I think for the sake of transparency, you kind of have to, otherwise you're heightened up.
Anything else? Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll start put this together and, and Jen's.
They, they were left on their intern offices.
So I, Jen's put together, I think, a very useful tool and we'll add to it as we go with the calendar so we can. Give you critical dates, things like that. So any questions or concerns you might have? Then any final comments? Time to dig in? Yeah, we do have Christmas and Thanksgiving. Yeah. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you both.
Okay, that brings us to consent agenda. We did get some testimony on the. The one item to, uh, code compliance, but I'm. And I have the same level of concern, I guess.
I have some concern.
About, really about the, the, um, job description, you know.
No, not the job description, but whether the, the law. The ordinance, the fines, the fees, all that is up to snuff and adequate, but if the. Request from the prosecutor and the, the feeling of the board is to get something going and we can always be working in progress as it's going, I'm fine with that. Yeah. As long as we don't hire somebody to just sit there and wait for us to get it done.
Well, I think, uh, Pat brought up some good points about, you know, the required and necessary knowledge. And what we put in there is that we're going to be spending time and effort and money getting this person.
Great.
Just not.
Yeah.
And trained and I'd love to put them in these departments to learn what they do to make their job easier and create the connections.
I, I didn't even think of where she said that there could be political.
Yeah.
I've never thought of that because I don't personally, I, you know, I don't know you gentlemen too much. Uh, but I think I know you well enough to know that that would never happen. Uh, I know myself. Enough that that would never happen, but I can understand. I can understand that angst from the public to think that, that maybe there would be, um, owned, we're not going to. You know, enforce it on this person because we like him and, and not on this person. I, I understand where that thought is coming from. I don't think it's needed, but.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I hadn't really thought about it that way, but I mean, I guess if it's in a department, there's. If it's in a, it's the, I mean, the same concern is blame me, I can, we. If the, the board can apply pressure to the director to the.
If we put it in the sheriff's department, then you still gotta worry do they enforce the gathering?
Right.
There could still be political there too, so there's no good answer. But I don't, I don't share that concern as long as, I think that's one of the reasons I wanted to oversee.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all ten items.
I would second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. To, uh, to approve the consent agenda with all ten items, further discussion. Hearing done, all is a paper saying, hi, hi.
Ready for payment?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we pay, pay estimate number sixteen, the Curdle Kirby Nagelhow Construction Company. In the amount of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-four cents, which excludes retainage in the amount of thirty-nine thousand. Two hundred and eight dollars and ninety-seven cents and includes sales tax. For the total payment of eight hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-three cents for the county services building project contract number C zero three one two zero.
I will second them. Okay, I have a motion and a second to pay, to approve pay estimate number sixteen to Curdle Nagelhow Construction Company. All those in favor, say aye.
Right.
Aye, aye, motion passed.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve pay estimate number two to Great Works LLC in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Excluding eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-three cents retained for a total pay amount of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. For the Old Mountain Road Project.
Second to motion, okay, motion to second on pay estimate number two to Great Works LLC for the Old Mountain Road Project. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passed.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve pay estimate number four to Lee Contractors LLC in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and seventy cents. Which includes retained to the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and fifty-nine cents and sales tax for the total payment of eighty thousand, seven hundred. And eighty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents for the Quikert County Courthouse Entrance Improvement Project, C zero six eight two one.
Second that motion as well. You have a motion in a second, uh, or pass them number four to Lee Contractors LLC. For the courthouse entrance improvement project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Bills.
Bills or other buildings?
There wasn't enough.
Now everything else.
Motion to accept the account payable warrants in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and sixty-four cents in the payroll benefit warrants. In the amount of zero dollars for the date heading August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Pay the, pay bills. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, next I guess we will take, uh, Treasurer Greg Gallagher Office Update and Finance Committee Report.
Good afternoon. Pretty short, I think most of it's been covered earlier, but I will just go back through. So we had our finance committee meeting on the thirteenth.
Ribbity.
What's that?
I said it was ribbon.
It was pretty, yeah, that's why I say I don't think this is gonna be that long. We did talk about the Rescue America.
We still managed to go over by forty-five minutes.
Yes, yes. We did talk about the Rescue America quite a bit and Jen is working, um, on doing some of the, um. Webinars and some other training on the Lost Revenue Calculator. Um, she reported that, um, you know, she's learning on how to. What qualifies, what doesn't, so on and so forth. So, and, and we all agreed that she would be doing a great job, so she's. She's kind of staying up on that and as to what's coming out from all of the rulemakers on that particular issue. The budgeting was another hot topic, uh, most of which was already just covered just shortly here ago by Rob and Jen. Um, so there really wasn't much printed, finished report that she finished up the Google sheet for the budgeting process.
Has she recovered?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think so. As of yesterday, yeah. Um, and the, we talked about the state audit. Brenda is continuing to work with the state auditors. Um, as we all are in the finance side, so, um, she says it's moving along. It's taking just a little bit longer as we're doing it remotely and so on and so forth. So that is, um, that's still progressing along. Um, and then the next meeting is the twenty-seventh. So, um, there really wasn't a lot of hot topics or reports or anything. It was fairly, um. Benign. We talked about the budget and the state audit and the, the funds. So any questions on the finance committee? Is there anything that I missed that you?
No, other than I would maybe, and I, I don't want to speak for Jen too, because I know she's still doing the, oh, she's behind the post. Oh, really? As far as on the lost revenue calculations, that hopefully we'll, we'll have some number that we feel comfortable with. Which looks like we were, we were pleasantly surprised that, uh, we'll be able, because again. At least I think the finance committee's recommendation is gonna be to as many, as much of that Rescue America dollars that we can. Charge against that lost revenue, because those have those, basically no strings on them.
And that's, it sounded, and it sounded like at that time, we would have a large portion of that, that we, it would be, you know, of one chunk.
Any idea how much?
That's why I didn't want to, when she was behind the post.
That's not my water to carry.
Rumor or idea or something on that for a while.
I was still waiting to hear from Teresa and Katrina on.
She's gonna make me wait.
Yeah.
I would say that I'm comfortable saying that the first tranche should be.
So that's two.
The two point two million or three, three, whatever it is. So we thought that was great news.
That was great.
Because that way that we're not going out for a bunch of little pieces. We have one big chunk in that.
General goodness money.
And then as far as the treasurer's office, um, we are into vacation month for us. Um, it seems like we have one or two. No, we don't all, but we scattered out, so we're, it's like, oh, who's here today? Um, so we have had.
Like birthday month where it's like, oh, this is my birthday.
Yeah, I think it's just because everybody thinks it's gonna be nice and sunny, so they want to go on vacation before school starts. Yeah, so which doesn't make it nice for Fairmont though, because then it's like, okay, you gotta kind of, people have to be in office. Um, so, uh, we are working on the fair. That is a, that's been a big project for us since the middle of Ju- July, just because we are the treasurer for the. Fair, so the money comes through here, so we are working with them. Uh, we are working on the state audit and we are working on budgets. Um. There's, you know, reads are always a main thing and I have not done the count recently to see where we're at, but they continue to be very high. Property transactions continue to be up there and it's across the board. It's not just here. Um, some other treasurers, we were visiting and everybody's in the same boat. Kind of astonished that it's continuing to be like that, but we're, it's, it's high, so. those were the, those were kind of some of the big hitters. So is there any questions?
Questions?
No.
Any questions, Rebecca?
Get it. So. All we really have. Not so, not much. Thank you.
Yes, yes, we will. Okay, next up, uh, prosecuting attorney, David Cannell. Uh, some updates which may be qualified for executive session.
Um, afforded a decision that we received through the parent examiner on the under campus issues, um, the DNS issued by the responsible official was upheld. And then the permit is going forward with about two pages of conditions, um, as highlighted. And the documents there, so they have a statutory timeframe. I remember quickly twenty-one days from the issuance to file a little bit of appeal in spirit for, and we'll see if that happens and which point to pay probably well.
What were your thoughts? You read, it seemed like the conditions were rational, logical. So what will be, if there is a, uh, appeal file, what will the county's responsibility will be for that?
The defense.
To defend the. None of the remaining matters were, are part of it. Okay.
Will I please ask that you finish any clinic issues? That way we can do not expect to come back in after the exam.
Any other kind of pending issues or anything, open section stuff before we go?
I defer to the patient until he's finished.
No, the fleet management stuff I wanted to talk about, but if we're scheduling that time later, we'll do it that way.
I did hear back from the Glenwood School and schools require masks.
Okay. Got some masks to take. That we can take with us.
I have everything, about two boxes.
Hold on. Yeah, how many masks are in a box?
I don't know.
Seems like about fifty, maybe more than that.
Well, how many we have last time was about a hundred people show up?
Yeah. I'd say less, the last, it's like it, you know, there was the peak and it's been worse and less each time.
I'll get more.
Is the school, just borrow, just borrow some.
Who's going to be the, the max?
Well, it's going to be this, it's the school's facility. I, I don't.
Our job too.
Yeah, as far as if it's a, if it's a requirement of using the facility, then we as the, our.
User of the facility.
Facility, it's, it's on us, who is ever running the meeting, yay. To try to enforce that, or at least, but.
For more, I know for pending, can you guys give me an update on the discussion that was had this morning? I, I had to hop off and attend that, you know, sorry.
Which discussion?
On how we're going to run this this evening.
Oh.
He's like, go ahead. Just moving my stomach out of the way.
So it was brought up by the under sheriff that, uh, we should expect a group of non-tractee people to show up and, and want to partake in this town hall meeting, of which I said that we're not allowing testimony for anything that isn't Glenwood related. And just kind of got a smile. Um, I don't think this is solar people. I think this is uh, anti-vaccine, anti-mask, anti, that whole thing. So I would like the meeting to have a set time limit of whatever that is, one hour, so that if we have a bunch of protests going on that we can't rein in, they're only eating into the time of the citizens in the neighborhood and the neighborhood citizens aren't going to like it. Eating into their time. Uh, otherwise we're going to be the bad guys that are getting protested on the whole time and we're having to get up and leave the meeting because it's a disorganized chaos fest.
Well, requiring masks at the door will sure make that interesting quick. Yeah, well.
What are you going to do if people choose?
Right.
That's kind of my point. Because you know what's going to happen. Guaranteed. But I don't think you're going to get law enforcement support.
Advice? Yeah, I don't.
Because I, what do you, how do you want to parse it? The, you are going to let people disrespect the, the rules of the school in the meeting and proceed or, I mean, the idea that you're going to have a voluntary hundred percent compliance is nonsensical. I mean, that I hold to be.
So are we not going to have a meeting now until this is all over? Because we're always going to have.
But you're a guest at someone else's facility that's imposed rules.
Right.
So if the county goes there and just disreforms the rules.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that. I, I will, I will do my best to make sure that there is compliance, but I don't, what am I going to do?
If you don't have the enforcement.
I can't afford, I had the same issue. We had a, we had the public hearing here and we had, you know, we were still under the mandate that we had to do it and I, you know, you know, and for the most part, we did not have any issue. We did have one individual that refused, which I made them wait out and then they came in and gave their testimony and then they left. And so, I mean, I could try to do that. Or I will do that, I guess. And if we can't, you know, we're going to end up with, if, you know, I'm trying to go and have a meeting about the thing I want to talk about and I'm going to end up having a brawl about something that's completely unrelated to it.
That's my work.
That's my, that is my worry too, and I know.
The governor made an exception for masks for when you are public speaking. So I would like to make it so whoever is speaking and addressing the board can at least pull down their masks to speak so I can actually understand what they're saying through their mask and then put their mask back up. I believe there is a legal exception for that and it sure would help me understand what people are saying because I, I even have trouble, um, prosecutor. My bad ears or.
What you're saying is there's no good options.
No, no. So I'm, I'm good however you want to do it.
Having a meeting in a, at a facility that you control, having a guest at another facility and disreforming the rules.
Or inviting people that you know are going to disinvite.
It's too bad that there's going on because you could do it at the fairgrounds. You have the stadium for them to sit in.
The idea was to get some feedback on.
Right.
And I don't know that we're going to get that feedback anyway.
But this doesn't sound like that's going to happen.
Well, we don't actually know that. We're speculating. We're, but we're speculating based on basically, I, I actually have not heard from, not, but I would necessarily, that there's going to be some, you know, bunch of protesters and people other than the comment of the under sheriff saying that he's been contacted, which I'm not discounting at all. That would be, I would be surprised if there wasn't.
It's a long way out there. I don't know if that many people are going to get in a car and drive to the party.
And, you know, and I will as a, as a.
Take your devil.
A point of, you know, we had, we expected when we had our public hearing on the solar ordinances, that was a hotly contentious thing that we had the same, all the same angst over mask mandates and not, and we, for the most part, we didn't have any problem. Because we had to limit the number of people in the room because we were like, we're going to follow the rules. But it was our facility. So I felt a lot more empowered to do that because it's, it's our facility. The school is, if that's, if that is their written policy or their policy of the school for people to use is that everybody in the building is, then we're going to, uh, if we're there using it, then I have every expectation that we're going to comply with that. And we expect other people to comply with it. And if I have to, I guess we would have to, if we do it and we have people that are not going to comply, then we'll have to make a decision about, well, then we're, I can't have a meeting. If people are not going to follow the rules, then there's no sense in us doing this. And I guess we'll go. Would be my.
That might be our only recourse.
Right.
Is if you're not going to comply with the school's rules, we can't be here.
We can't be here.
I think a good thing to do is to have conversation with the superintendent of school and see if they're planning on coming anyways. And if they would also be there to let everyone know that these are the rules to school. These are going to be the rules to the school. I heard about the school board meeting the other night, you know, that there was a lot of people that showed up about the whole masking, you know, the kids.
That the, in Glenwood, oh, in Glenwood.
And it was people that showed up that weren't even from Glenwood.
It's a hindsight culture, not just the rodeo ground.
Into this, we asked for a place to meet.
I don't think there's a good answer and would be part of this, this point being so last minute.
Even meetings getting difficult. Yeah.
I know that the, I don't know what her title is, but she is in the office. She was going to be there when we're there.
Because we have to get let in anyway, right?
Right.
I don't think she wants to take on the responsibility of being the mask police though. And I don't know that I would put that on her.
No, I would say the, you know, it's on us if we're using their facility. And if we, I would say for me, if, you know, if I had a clear set of rules, you lay it out, if people are not going to be compliant, we're not going to have the meeting because we can't. And we'll just all go home and you missed your opportunity. And I guess you got to make your point if that's what you wanted to do, but we would have loved to have had some kind of input on this actual thing that we came to talk about. Because I think at this point, I, I, again, I, we can't reschedule. I mean, we could try to reschedule, but if we're, if we're going to do that, we're going to reschedule there, then we're going to announce that there because there's no way to, to head people off now at three o'clock in the afternoon for a meeting at six thirty.
It's already horrific and all the trajectories from, you know, here for your public health officer.
Right.
Getting substantially worse.
Right. It's not, that's what I mean. It's not going to, so I, I guess what we'll do from a certain perspective is probably better now than it will be two or three weeks from now. And so if we can get, I'm going to hold out hope that we can get some.
A lot of the Glenwood crowd is at the rodeo grounds, won't be able to partake in anything where at a later time they would even.
Yeah. So. Let's see what happens. We'll see what happens. I mean, no good deed goes unclaimed.
So we don't have a big plan. We're just hoping for our plan.
Well, what, well, I'm, I'm open to suggestions. Let me, let me roll back again.
I know, I, I voiced my concerns. I don't know that there's a good answer for any of them.
Can you come in, sir?
I don't think he's made his mind up yet.
Because, you know, they're going to want an explanation of exactly where we're at. And the only person that knows that better than anybody else is he.
Yeah, but I don't know that he can get into the details.
There's going to be most of the questions I can answer.
Or we should even get into most of the details if it pertains to what could still be. You know, we shouldn't be talking about percentages of winning or.
We don't know any.
Or our thoughts on percentages. Or any of speculation. We really shouldn't be getting into any.
So in essence, what we're really there is to hear from them about what they feel we should do.
When I originally thought of this, I thought it, it was a, give them as much knowledge as I have on percentages and chances and whatever. And, and, you know, they've already dealing with what they're dealing with from the accommodation. And do you want to continue this forward or do you want to say okay and retreat? But I don't know that they can make up that decision without knowing what I know. And I can't really tell them what I know. Or shouldn't because it could adversely affect.
Sorry, go into executive. And see how the thing falls apart. It'll go great.
It'll be fine. Okay. Well, we will go into executive session in course with the RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero, print one, print I, for update, discussion of pending litigation, pending or threatened litigation for how long? Would we anticipate? Start with fifteen minutes. And I would let folks know, we are not planning on taking any action when we come back out of execs, other than to just adjourn. Uh, if we do, we would record it so people could watch it. So then we will, uh, likely when we come out, we will just motion to adjourn to the Glenwood meeting, which is at six thirty this, uh, tonight in Glenwood.
To discuss track D.
To discuss track D and track D only.
Your devil.
So I will. So we could just leave then.
We just turn it off.
Yep.
That's the new strategy. Anytime we do executive, it is a pause, it's turn off.
Just shut off.